All right. I declare open this public hearing of the House of Representatives Standing Committee on Social Policy and Legal Affairs for the Inquiry into Constitutional Reform and Referendums. This inquiry relates to the conduct of referendums rather than any specific proposal to amend the Constitution. In accordance with the committee's resolution of the 23rd of July, 2019, this public hearing will be broadcast, and the proof and official transcripts of proceedings will be published on the Parliament's website. I remind any members of the media who may be watching or listening online of the need to fairly and accurately report the proceedings of the committee. I now welcome Professor George Williams, AO, Dr. Bede Harris and Dr. Paul Kildare to give evidence. I remind you that although the committee does not require you to give evidence under oath, this hearing is a legal proceeding of the Parliament, and therefore has the same standing as a proceeding of the House. The giving of false or misleading evidence is a serious matter and may be regarded as a contempt of Parliament. Before we get underway formally, I would just like to apologize on behalf of my colleagues for our late start, particularly to our witnesses and to anybody who may be watching or listening online or via the Parliament's website. We had some technical issues, but we're now good and we're ready to go. Now, what I'd like the witnesses to do, please, is for the Hansard Record, would you please state your full names and the capacity in which you appear before the committee, and I'll go in the names in which I introduced you. So Professor Williams, would you like to start off?
Sure, it's George John Williams and I appear in a private capacity.
Thank you, Professor Williams, and Dr. Bede Harris.
Bede Xavier Harris and I appear in a private capacity.
Thank you, and Dr. Kildare.
Paul Joseph Kilde and I also appear in a private capacity.
Thank you, gentlemen. I'll now ask the committee members just to briefly introduce themselves. Deputy Chair.
Thanks Chair, good morning everybody. My name's Sharon Clayton, I'm the Deputy Chair of this committee and the federal member for Newcastle. Trifecta have you all this morning, thank you.
Thanks Deputy Chair, Mike Freeland.
Oh, thanks, Mike Freeland. I'm the Member for Macarthur in South West Sydney, named today by the University of New South Wales as the most financially stressed electorate in Australia. Thanks for appearing today and thanks for your time.
Thanks, Mike. Peter.
Hello all, Peter Murphy, Member for Dunkley, which is South East Melbourne and essentially Frankston. Welcome, I'm going to start by making this observation, looking at the witnesses we have today, we may need to encourage more women to either become constitutional scholars or make submissions.
Thank you, Peter Murphy, Julian Simmons.
Yeah, thanks Chair, Julian Simmons, Federal Member for Ryan, which is the Western suburbs of Brisbane, and forgive me for being on the teleconference rather than video conference.
All good, your presence is, we're very appreciative of you coming online, thank you. And I've met you before, Professor Williams, I don't think I've met you before, Professor Kildare or Mr. Harris, Dr. Harris. But my name's Andrew Wallace, I'm the Federal Member for Fisher and I'm the Chair of this august committee. Is there, are there any other of my colleagues on the line which I'm not aware of? No, all right, excellent. To minimize disruptions to the hearing, I remind members and the witnesses to please use a headset if you have one. I would say that by the sounds so far, your audio sounds pretty good, so I think we'll keep going with what we've got. Could I ask you all to please ensure your microphones are muted whilst you're not speaking? If you are disconnected, please reconnect using the details you've been provided with. This discussion will really be, we're hoping, a round table discussion with the three of you. But I do, before we get underway, just want to give you each an opportunity to make a short opening statement. You should assume and take it as read that we have read your submissions, but if you'd like to make a short opening statement, please do so. Professor Williams, would you like to kick us off?
Sure, happy to, thank you Chair, and look, I certainly welcome the opportunity to appear again before this committee. I mean, this has been a fairly regular occurrence and I think, you know, we need to reflect upon that as well. I think since the last referendum, I think this might be the fifth time I've appeared before this committee on how we can improve how we hold constitutional referendums in Australia. And it's a long running issue that, as it was on the first time, needs action and reform. The reason this is important is because the Constitution has a profound impact upon how we're governed in Australia and affects the quality of life of every Australian. You can look at, for example, our federal system where the Business Council over a decade ago identified that problems within the Constitution meant that we're wasting about $9 billion a year. And that's about a 3% drag on GDP. They estimated at that point that every Australian household's paying over $1,000 each year in wasted tax, simply because we have a outdated constitutional structure that does not support efficiency within the federal system. You can look at the plight of Indigenous peoples and the fact that the Constitution has conspicuously failed them over many years and hence their call for a voice today. And there are many examples of this kind where our failure to properly navigate constitutional change has a profound and large impact upon the nation. From the most fundamental issue of how much tax we pay through to our perception of ourselves as a nation. This issue also matters because it has a big impact upon the cost of holding referendums. When we, as I hope we do, eventually hold a referendum on the Uluru Statement from the Heart, that all might cost $200 million, it might cost $250 million. At the least, it'll cost well over $100 million. That's an enormous outlay for a referendum. So you would think we would want the rules to be in good shape, to actually hold that efficiently, fairly and the like, and they're not in good shape. And this has been true of many referendums. I refer the committee to the book I wrote some years ago, I analysed every referendum held in Australia, and this was a consistent theme, it's not that Australians want to vote no, it's often political mismanagement failures in how the referendums are held. And indeed, if you contrast this to state and territory referendums, there's a much, much higher rate of success. In fact, most of them pass without much alarm or problem. When we look at why the rules are so out of date, it's because Parliament has failed to update them. We have a set of rules that was put in place in 1912 and the core part of those rules remains today. We have a set of rules that, of course, I've mentioned social media and in fact even predate radio. So if you look at the rules, they say more about what to do in disorderly town hall meetings than they do about electronic media. We have a yes and no case in a written form that is simply not fit for purpose for the current day. I remember in the 1999 referendum, asking my class at A&amp;U, I'm not sure whether Peter was a member of this one, but of that class, about 150 people, not a single person had read the yes and no case from beginning to end. It was simply unhelpful, uninteresting, and yet that is the primary mechanism by which people get their information. So I think the record itself tells the story, we won't go into that, but we know that constitutional change is not just at a low ebb, it's in a catastrophically low ebb. We haven't held a referendum since 1999, the longest period in our history. The first decade in our history without a referendum was the 2000s, the second ever decade was the 2010s. And yet we have a constitution that dates more as the years pass, the urgency actually increases. So I won't go into the detail of my submission except to say that what I'm arguing for is a rethink as to how we spend hundreds and hundreds of millions of dollars and how we can better tackle a broad range of referendum issues that often simply go back to the efficient and good working of government. And I think we have a system today that is clearly not fit for contemporary Australia. And I would encourage the Parliament to think about updating that system, to be fair, to generate good ideas, educate Australians and to hold referendums that generate public confidence, so that we can actually get the process kickstarted again and start fixing some of these problems that frankly are holding the nation back.
Thanks very much, Professor Williams. Now, Dr. Harris.
Thank you very much. I think that something that strikes me about the Constitution, and this echoes something that Professor Williams has just said, is if you consider what the state of medicine or engineering or any other area of human knowledge was in 1901 and compare the developments that have occurred till now, everything is strikingly different. Yet, one couldn't really say that that much is strikingly different about the Constitution, certainly not the core mechanics of it, what it contains, what it omits as compared to 1901. So, yes, there is an enormous need to engage in constitutional reform along a very broad range of topics which I listed in my submission. And I think that apart from the mechanical aspects of how referenda are held, the core of the problem lies in disengagement on the part of voters and, to another extent, fear on the part of voters, because what they don't understand, they fear changing. It's like looking at a huge machine and someone says, right, this could operate better, do you want to pull that lever or the other lever? And of course, if you don't know what's going to happen when you pull either lever, you tend to go, well, I'm just going to leave it alone. And, you know, to me, the core of this, and I too learn from my students as they come through, is the lack of knowledge about how the Constitution works, which is ultimately rooted in the fact that we don't teach civics education properly. You know, if you look back into the ancient world, Cicero said that the key foundation of the state was a public spirited and publicly engaged citizen, and we don't have that in Australia. So the long term answer to this is a radical reform of our civics education. But in the immediate term, I think it would be a very good idea to have a standing commission to receive and consider proposals for reform, as well as to, of course, amend the mechanisms by which referenda are held. Because there is such a backlog of things that need addressing, I think we can't wait the generational change that it'll take to improve how we teach civics, and we need to do something in the immediate term. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Kildare.
Yeah, thanks very much, and look, it's really great that the committee's looking at these issues now. Often, we only wait until a referendum is right around the corner before we start thinking about constitutional review processes and the rules that govern referendums and how we voted them, so it's great that we're looking at them now. If we wait until a referendum is held, it's just too late. Any move to change the rules at that point is seen as strategic and provokes a negative backlash. So this is the time to start looking at issues such as these, design questions around how to run a review process and also the rules that govern how we vote at referendum. And of course, there's momentum building for a referendum on the First Nations voice. And if a vote should go ahead in the years to come, as I hope it will, it's important that the process that is in place is a good one. So when it comes to mechanisms for constitutional review, I think there's a lot that we can learn from overseas. I mean, one thing about having our last referendum held in 1999 is that a lot has happened elsewhere. So there's a lot that we can learn about from elsewhere. In particular, many countries are making more use of citizens' assemblies and other deliberative forums to advance debates about constitutional change. There's been a real shift both in democratic theory and developments there around deliberative democracy, but also in deliberative practice. So there's lots to learn from. These forums bring together ordinary citizens to learn about and debate important issues and to make recommendations to governments. And when these assemblies are run well, they expand constitutional debates beyond the usual suspects and they help to facilitate really meaningful public engagement with constitutional issues. And this kind of forum would work well, I think, to promote debate on issues like the republic or four year parliamentary term and so on. Of course, we don't need to look overseas to find a recent example of innovation in constitutional reform process in the sense that there's the Uluru regional dialogues and the Uluru Convention, which made use of a deliberative model in order to advance consideration of the various reform proposals there. So I think we can learn from overseas, but we can also learn from that particular process. Turning to referendum machinery, as George noted, some of the arrangements are now more than a century old, they really do need some updating. One thing to think about is what are the key values or principles that we want to guide that change? And I think for me, the key values that should guide that change are the promotion of a level campaign playing field and also fostering deliberation and informed voting. I think these are the things we need to keep in mind as we go ahead and seek to update and revise those laws. My submission goes into those issues in a bit of detail, but for me, if I was to name a list of priorities, it would be changing the approach to question setting so that questions are more simple, direct, clear and neutral, lifting the restrictions on Commonwealth expenditure, redesigning the official pamphlet and also looking at establishing an independent body like an independent referendum panel to oversee public education initiatives. So thank you, look forward to today's hearing.
Thanks very much, Dr. Kildare. So what I'd like to do, and I'm sure I speak on behalf of my colleagues here, is that each of my colleagues and I will be asking some questions, and it won't be necessarily, unless it's expressly phrased as such, but posing questions to the three witnesses, and it's a round table discussion, feel free to jump in and comment on, you know, respond to a question, but also to what each of the witnesses are also saying. I want to pick up, if I can, to start off with about civics education. And one of the, one of the things that frustrates me greatly, and I think one of the, one of the best parts that I enjoy about my job as an MP is being able to get into schools and talk to school groups about civics, about government. And whilst the kids seem to be very engaged at a sort of a year six, year seven level, that civics knowledge that they learn and sometimes if the school's fortunate enough to be able to come down to Canberra and get immersed in the whole Canberra experience, by around about year nine, year 10, it's gone. And I know as the father of what once were teenagers and now in their twenties, even with a father that's a federal MP, many young people just seem to either be totally disinterested in the political process or government process or what we teach them at grade six and grade seven is totally lost on them as they get a bit older. I noticed in one of the submissions, I can't remember whose it was, talked about civics being taught compulsory up to year 10. My understanding is that civics, whilst they get taught to around grade six, grade seven, it doesn't go beyond that. And there's a huge gaping hole and the kids just totally forget, you know, everything that they've learned at that young age. So I'm keen to get some practical advice from you about the problems with the current system and more importantly, how we might improve them. Very long ended question, but I might start with you, George. If, sorry, Professor Williams.
Yeah, no, George is fine, and we do have a problem in this area, and of course, we see it at university as well, where you can have, you know, really smart uni students who disclaim knowledge of even some of the most basic aspects of our system of government, let alone the Constitution. And we also know, if you look at the polling, that then one poll taken some time ago asked Australians, do we have a written constitution? Around one in two said no. And, you know, you can guess the answer, that yes or no, so heaven knows what the actual result was. Or there was a poll that came out just a couple of months ago, asking Australians, do we have some sort of bill of rights in our constitution? And only 50% said yes. So we're dealing with a very large problem that is distorting policy preferences, having a large impact on the ability to reform and also really undermining the ability of citizens to be effective participants in government and to hold governments to account. I think we can certainly improve how we teach civics, there's no doubt about that. But look, in my experience, and I've done a lot of talks to schools and the like, you don't get very far with just writing information in this area, it's pretty dry and often pretty dull. You know, we need to be upfront about that, you need energy.
Well, it depends on the presenter, Professor Williams, of course.
Well, you can be the best presenter in the world, but in the end, unless there's reinforcement, that's what it's about, activities. So in fact, the best thing I've seen that works are the constitutional conventions, they're really good. You know, the kids that participate in those remember them for years and will come to you at uni and say, I did this at school, this was wonderful, I remember this experience. So for me, it's less about content and how do we move this more into active engagement. I'd also say that not having had a referendum since 99 makes it pretty hard because kids say, what's the relevance of this? Whereas when I, you know, worked through the Republic referendum, people didn't read the yes and no case, but gee, they're interested in this issue and they wanted to know what was happening in the news. So we need, you know, we need more active constitutional reform, we need energy engagement, and I also think we need things like conventions and the like of kids that actually give them a participatory form of engagement. That works, in my experience, what we're doing at the moment, in a passive receipt of dry information, it's no surprise to me that they don't remember it.
I really liked your suggestion, Professor Williams, about a constitutional convention each decade. I know that there were other submitters that, you know, were trying to suggest that those happen much more regularly. But I think if you do them more regularly, I think you sometimes take away this from the significance of holding it. And I think that that, once every 10 years, certainly provides the opportunity for, I think you said in your submissions, a half generation to be able to take part in this process without it being so regularly that it loses its gloss, if I can put it that way. Do you want to speak to that at all?
Yeah, happy to, and it is designed to do as you're suggesting. And so it shouldn't be too often because the Constitution rightly shouldn't be changing all the time. You know, it should have some consistency, a sense of permanence about it. But we do need regular engagement, and at the moment, what we're lacking is a hook or some regular activity that draws our conversation towards constitutional change. And if we had that regular half generation convention, again, you can generate ideas through schools, you'd link it to education, that would be a big part of this. It also has processes such as the Constitutional Commission I suggested and others developing ideas, and it actually have a regular focal point for debate. At the moment, we don't, and so things just drift for years. And something like the Uluru Statement, again, can drift for years because where is the end game for this? Where is actually the capacity to look at it and take things forward? And also critically, how do you put other things on the agenda? You know, just bread and butter things that are about a better economic system or about fixing a legion of obsolete provisions. And again, a convention provides you a known upcoming event at which these things can be discussed.
Dr. Harris or Dr. Kildare, do you want to just, do you want to pipe in there at all or add to that?
Yeah, thanks, Chair, go ahead, go ahead, Dr. Harris, I know your submission covers this and I'll come in after you.
Okay, I mean, I have nothing that would contradict what Professor Williams said, but could I just elaborate on some of the themes that I discussed in this regard? I think that, you know, part of the problem is not only for how long we teach civics at school, but also the content of the curriculum, because under the Australian curriculum that was unveiled in 2010 or 2012, the civics and citizenship module is very good from a mechanical point of view in that it explains how the Constitution as it is written operates, and one can't fault it on that. But what's really absent is any concept of teaching of values. And you can't critique a constitution, which is obviously a set of rules, unless you've got a framework or values against which to critique it. So it's really the absence of any ethical or philosophical content that I think lies at the heart of the problem that we have in relation to reluctance to think of something better. I mean, you know, a student who does well in this will be able to tell you that, yes, everyone can vote for the House of Representatives, but they won't be able to answer the question, well, is the system that we have for voting fair? And what would a fair electoral system mean from the perspective of the individual citizen? And they may say, well, each state has an equal number of senators to ensure equality between the big states and the small states. When you unpack that statement, which is a sort of gospel which is rehearsed again and again, it doesn't really make any sense because you're simply saying, well, that the population of a state should negatively impact on it in the sense that it shouldn't get as much representation as its population entitles it to you, it to. But it doesn't focus on, well, the rights of the individual citizen in that state, what makes a Tasmanian voter different from a South Australian voter? And in the absence of, you know, the geographical positioning, the answer is nothing. So what I'm really saying is that I think that the civics needs an additional dimension, which is something to do with, you know, philosophy, ethics, which is very commonly taught in Europe. And I think, like Professor Kilde said, we do have a lot to learn from overseas jurisdictions in this regard.
Yeah, thanks very much, I found that out of your submissions fascinating, Dr. Harris, about your suggestion of bringing more philosophy into schools. Dr. Kildare.
Yeah, look, just quickly, I think relevance is a real key. It's no surprise if Australians, including young Australians, don't, perhaps don't know a lot about the constitutional system because when they wake up in the morning, they don't really need that knowledge to go about their lives. I mean, I don't know what the second law of thermodynamics is, I'm told that it's a great failing on my part, but I don't know. But I don't need it, need to know about it to go about my life. And so I think if we would like Australians to be more knowledgeable, we need to make it relevant for them. And I've made a kind of run focus group research around this, and what comes back time again is that what's important is relevance and that I think by their nature, constitutional issues can seem very remote from people's lives. And that's the challenge in this area. And I think, you know, that if, if, thinking about, say, high school students, if they were following the news and there were processes in place, a bit like George mentioned, but if there are processes in place where they could see that if they did take the time to learn about constitutional issues, then they'd then be able to engage meaningfully and participate in a meaningful way to national debates, then they might have an incentive to do that. So I think having, say, a once in a year, a once in a decade kind of constitutional convention, I think, could help with that. But also, you know, sometimes we run constitutional reform processes in a very top down closed manner, but to the extent that they can be run in a more bottom up grassroots way, then that's going to motivate some people to get involved and motivate some people to learn about it.
Chair, before we move on from education, can I ask some questions on education?
Absolutely, and just for my colleagues' benefit, if you do want to ask a question on a particular topic that a colleague is exploring, just put your hand up, or send me a WhatsApp.
Great, thank you, gentlemen. I do think there's, you know, different aspects of this inquiry that are interrelated, but you can look at separately. And this issue of civics education is a really important one. And just to start by considering that perhaps right now, we are in a moment in time in Australia where we need to be talking about civics education and the Constitution because of the various responses to the COVID restrictions. So I assume I speak on behalf of my colleagues in saying that we do get a number of emails at the moment where people purport to know what is in section 51 of the Constitution. And it, to me, highlights the importance of the underlying education. The underlying education um that Doctor Harris was talking about, but then what he also sort of touches on, I think, a bit in your submission, which is also ensuring. Um, somehow rather that the broader citizenry also understands what is actually in the constitution, what what the provisions. We don't have to be constitutional scholars. I mean, most people in parliament are. Um, but what the provisions go to. So you may or may not be the right people to ask this because it is a a question about education. But um attracted as I am to the constitutional convention proposal, um. George, particularly one every ten years that would hopefully have some national attention. When we talk about that and about students. How do we avoid the self-selection that often happens? Um, how do we avoid the the top students or the most engaged students? Um, or the ones from the schools that are the most privileged or most engaged with their students, being the ones that get to go to these things? You know, how do we broaden that participatory educational process out to um the students that are going to leave at year ten, if not before? Um, that aren't going to be the people that are engaged in university or law or politics. But are still going to be the people for whom these issues will affect their daily lives, whether they know it or not.
Thank you for the question. And certainly on the former part of your, and I agree strongly in the sort of social media age in which we are, I see every day as you do. How the lack of understanding is filled by misunderstanding in this area. And the really big impact that has upon people's political views, their perceptions of what Parliament's can and can't do. And it's really corrosive of confidence in public institutions. Um, and we know how emotionally invested people can get in simply wrong information, particularly at the moment. So yeah, I think I think there's a big issue there. In terms of how you involve more more kids, I mean, we do have a convention system that comes to Canberra as the peak. Convention. I mean, I've done that a number of times and speaking of it's good, but you're right, it engages a certain number of kids. And for me, I'd actually like to see every school holding a constitutional convention. It might be all of its year nine or year ten kids at that key point. But every kid gets involved at that point, not just the select few. It's just part of the curriculum. So instead of just relating information, there is an engaging exercise that they're all involved in. And then the key is, as part of that, to choose a good topic. It might be, for example, should the constitution be amended to provide that sixteen-year-olds should vote? You know, something that's directly relevant to them, where they can look through their own experience. Would it be a good idea that we all have to vote? And again, my experience is when you do that, you find even the disengaged kids start getting really interested. You know, it's engaged, it's interesting, it's participatory. Um, but just as we have, perhaps all schoolkids come to Canberra at one point in their education, perhaps all schoolkids should be part of a constitutional convention. At the right moment, um, to give them a chance to engage in a different way.
We might be able to hold one remotely. We've all learnt how to do that now.
Well, you could. And indeed, if we and if we had the the half-generation convention, it would fit very nicely into that, that, you know, the kids are doing their convention. Generating ideas, debating it, and then you lead to the big national set piece. But I I think that's what we are missing in the schools is that an active engagement piece in high school. That every kid should do, not just the self-selecting group.
Yeah, and the ones that get to come to Canberra. Um, I will let the other two witnesses answer, but I do want to just put on the record that I was not in Professor Williams' class in nineteen. And it was at the start of the nineties, um, not the end of the nineties.
You should have claimed that one, Peter.
I know, because I would have read the pamphlet from beginning to end. Over to you two gentlemen.
Um, yes, I I would echo um what what George said uh about the conventions. Um, you know, I think um. It's it's it isn't just that the students should come to us, we should go out to them. And um I um, uh, you know, had a an instance when um Michael Kirby came to launch a book of mine. And we went to a high school during the day um to talk to um students in in year. Uh, well, in fact, I think it was years ten to twelve all packed into the auditorium. And of course, being the presenter he is, they absolutely took to it and were very, very enthusiastic. So I think, you know, if more of us went out um and 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 visited schools in our regions, it would it would really be positive.
So the federal government could fund a program, for example, where um educators. Politicians, constitutional experts could go out to schools, so everyone could experience the sort of thing that whichever school it was that you and Michael Kirby went to, which I suspect was somewhere in Sydney. Um.
No, it was a a high school in Wadonga.
Excellent. I'm very pleased to hear that.
Um, thanks, Peter. Uh, I ran some introductory, introductory constitutional law classes last week. And it was incredible how many students mentioned their year six excursion to Canberra. It clearly has made a huge impression on them. And a lot of them asked, why why did it stop there? I mean, obviously, they're a bit self-selecting, they've now enrolled in a law degree, but they were keen to do more of that sort of thing as they went through. Uh, look, I think, um, look, there's one idea to throw in in terms of, you know, how do you ensure that you just don't have the the self-selected group participate in these events? Uh, is is random selection. So that's the a selection approach that is used for deliberative forums like citizens' assemblies that I mentioned earlier. And so the idea is that you 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 would get a list of, say, in this case, students. And you would randomly, uh, you know, you had at random select, uh, say, you know, fifty or a hundred or however large you wanted your convention to be, and you would you would invite them to attend. And um the benefit of it is that it means that you get people from of of all kind of levels of ability and different kind of life circumstances. And the the evidence shows that actually it makes for a really um en- enrich enriching uh debate. And that, you know, you don't need to be one of the cleverest kids in school, I think, to be able to participate well. Uh, in debates about vote voting rights or all sorts of other issues. And so I think, you know, one one way to go about it is to think about, well, uh, if we can't get a constitutional convention at every school, um, we can only run a few. Uh, maybe uh we uh change how we select who goes and try and get more of a cross-section of the student body. And I think we'd we'd all hope, and I think the evidence would suggest that um it that people who at the top of the class and in the middle and at the bottom. There's potential for everyone there to learn and to get excited about um constitutional change.
We we, I I don't know uh if everyone else is the same, but I just lost about the last twenty or thirty seconds. Um, Professor, Doctor Kildia, did anyone suffer the same fate?
No, we just lost you, Andrew. Oh, chair, sorry, formally.
Um, okay, no worries. Sorry, um, Ms. Murphy, keep going.
Oh, I'm I I noticed that Doctor Freelander's got his um virtual hand up, so I'm happy to um let see to him to jump in.
Oh, thanks, thanks, Peter. Thanks, Sharon. And and thank the three of you for your time. It's very valuable. Grateful that Doctor Harris mentioned that medicine has evolved over the last hundred and twenty years. Seems like it probably hasn't in some ways to me, but uh thank you for that acknowledgement. But I just wanted to just ask a quick question, leading on from what Peter was saying. And that's just a way of explanation. Constitutional convention every ten years is a great idea. But I agree with Peter, it's likely to attract uh really a a group of elites rather than the broad spectrum of. People that we need to involve. And I'm just interested in your ideas about how we can better engage. The whole range of 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 children and and even adults to to this sort of debate. Because I I don't think that at the moment that's what happens. And I think that's one of the reasons why, unless there's pretty broad bipartisan support, support um referendums never get up. Um, and I'm interested in what Doctor Kilday and and Doctor Harrison and Professor Williams have to say about that. And one idea that I've been thinking about is whether we should actually have a standing committee on the constitution. That reviews this on a continuing basis of how we can engage. So that that's my one question. Thank you very much.
Well, I can start again and then pass on to the others. I think um if we were to hold something like this in ten years. I mean, what Parliament might do now is legislate this year and say the first of them is, say, five years away. Um, that would really focus the mind for the next five years and generate a lot of energy, a lot of interest, a lot of potential within schools. And uh I think wh- what you have in terms of choices is how you structure that. I mean, as Doctor Kilday has already suggested, I mean, you can look to overseas models, which actually aren't elite models. In fact, they're very participatory. You can have random selection of the community is one option. There's all sorts of ways of doing conventions. Um, and I'd actually support, you know, some imagination and uh we can test some things out using those models. Uh, to make sure it really is participatory. It's not hard to do, it's done overseas. The other thing I'd say about the power of these is they they tend to capture enormous attention across the community. I remember being at Pa- Old Parliament House for the ninety ninety-eight convention and being frankly shocked at the queues, hundreds of metres long. Uh, I so I spoke to people in the queues, they said they've driven two or three hours, they've never had something like this and they wanted to see what it was like. They want to be part of it. They saw it as history. Being made. And this were just ordinary Australians who were queuing to be in the gallery and they had to circulate them around every twenty minutes. There were so many. Talkback radio was full of the convention, people talking about what happened that day. Did you agree? Did you agree with that? So they become a focal point, very powerful community engagement and education. But I think you're absolutely right. The key is to get the membership of it right. So it actually, you know, represents our aspirations for the sorts of Australians who should have a say, which is all of us, all the votes, so we should all be seen to be taking part in the convention.
Oh, I'll 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 say, yeah, I'll say something. Um, it it just, yeah, I think George is right about the the potential of the uh processes to really shine a light on um. On the issues at hand and for people to get really excited about them. They serve as a really effective focal point. Um, on the uh kind of the sorts of events that have been run in Ireland, say, the Irish Constitutional Convention and Citizens' Assembly. Uh, so what's really striking about them is if you you kind of look up, there's some video and images online. And it's just, it's just people in in jeans and and, you know, jumpers uh sitting around. Ordinary people sitting around having a cup of tea in in a conference room, talking about constitutional issues. A lot of them feeling that they won't kind of enjoy it very much, but at the, at the, you know, by the end of the process, uh, it's um. There there's been a very rich discussion around the issue. And um it's it is really striking that it's not the usual suspects, it's not just the elites, it's not just the ivory tower and and politicians talking about these issues, it's people just from the streets. And um and uh coming, uh, you know, they have access to experts, they're able to engage in kind of small group and large group discussions. Um, and come up with some really sensible recommendations that then go to Parliament to to be debated. Um, so it's a really exciting model and there are different ways you can do it. You can have it so the entire membership is uh made up of lay citizens randomly selected. Or you can do a bit of a hybrid model where, say, two thirds are randomly selected and the other third are are political representatives to ensure there's buy-in from political representatives. There's a range of different approaches that have been used successfully overseas. Um, and none of them displaced the final decision-making authority of the Parliament or or the government, as the case may be. So it's all about it may having a rigorous process that then goes through to inform the parliamentary process. Um, and just one last thing is to mention that a lot of these questions came up in the nineties. And um the Constitutional Centenary Foundation, which is led by Professor Cheryl Saunders, ran some really fantastic um events throughout that decade. Um, including local constitutional conventions at local government level, like dozens of them, lots of school conventions, lots of information um uh packages. So there's a lot that I think we can learn from the nineteen nineties as well.
All right, uh, we might go to uh the deputy chair now.
Thank you, um, Chair. That's great. And uh actually, a number of my questions have actually now been covered with uh Mike and Peter's contribution there. I guess I'm interested to know then, um, I I followed the regional dialogues quite closely through the lead-up to the Uluru Statement. And found that a really very uh, you know, a fascinating process. Um, I was privy to some discussions um up around Barunga where, you know, I sat in a tent where peoples. Where English might have been the fourth or fifth language for some people, but the most sophisticated discussions of the constitution that I've ever heard in a long time. So um, I'm interested, did we, you know, were there any kind of lessons learned from that process? It seems to me we've had deliberative um assemblies from time to time. We've had these little kind of uh outbursts of civic democracy. Uh, but they dissipate. And so um, which I, you know, I heard a bit of your frustration earlier that how many. Forums we've come to present at Professor Williams. And I do, I am feeling your frustration. Um, I guess I'm interested, like, where where, what do we learn from those processes? And why is that not better informing our discussions today? What are the what are the obstacles?
Well, I I think, to be frank, I think the main obstacles are political obstacles. There's a lot of knowledge in this area. And as much as we, you know, can bemoan the bad record, there's a lot of really positive things happening, both in Australia and around the world. And the political challenge is to learn from those and to build them into national policy. And I think the Uluru process is a really good example of that, where, uh, as you said, um, very successful ground-up process leading to a national convention. Uh, it also mirrored my experience that often you go out into communities and they are extremely articulate, extremely interested and often really frustrated. Nobody's listened to them. About this issue and they want that opportunity. If we were to have the half-generation convention, I actually think would follow a similar process. You wouldn't just have the one set piece, you'd work it up. So you might work it up from the school conventions, you'd also have community conventions, maybe based on local government areas. And uh that would generate enormous grassroots energy and momentum towards a national uh a national process. Uh, and I think the big takeaway for me is Australians want to be involved in these things. In fact, much of their frustration is feeling left out. Of deliberative processes that determine how this nation is governed. And that then feeds into distrust, apathy, all sorts of problems. But if we can flip that and give them a genuine engaged opportunity, then as Uluru shows, great process. And look at the power that that's had in terms of shifting debate and putting something on the agenda. That's the sort of thing we want to replicate generally for the things that need to be changed to the constitution.
Thanks. I I mean, it struck me when I thought about all the school visits that, you know, I've been very um, you know, privileged to be in Parliament for eight years now. Seen a few schoolkids coming through. And I've got to say, there is absolutely no shortage of really brilliant questions that come from them when they come to meet us in Parliament House. And um, and they are often, um, you know, it has also struck me that there are just uh particular issues that really, really kind of grab. Uh, particularly young people um as they come through. And so, you know, um, finding some connectivity perhaps between that passion. You know, it's not, I I've had three thousand students on my office doorstep wanting to talk to me about climate change. So um, you know, I I think finding connections between the constitution. Uh, the pa- the issues and the things that are driving people that are deeply passionate about um will be quite critical in terms of going back to your point. I think um, um, Doctor Kilday is finding relevance in people's lives. And making those connections. I think for First Nations people, there's been a really actually very longstanding uh, you know, knowledge uh and practice of the. Connection between the constitution and live reality, maybe not so much the case for other sort of, you know, cohorts in our community. Um, sorry, I'm not sure there was a question there, but I am trying to tease out. If you've got ideas around uh making the constitution relevant uh for different, you know, this was an issue that you raised, Doctor Kildar. So maybe you might have some further thoughts for us on um ensuring there is relevance for people wanting to take part in these discussions.
Sure. Thank, thank you. And look, I I think sometimes it's not going to be relevant, you know, there won't be that relevance. But some issues, say, for example, if it was about um, uh, you know, changing section forty-four of the constitution, which I think is badly, you know, some change there is badly needed. That that's a kind of change which can seem a little bit technical and a bit remote. And there's perhaps no way we can dress that up issue up for people to make it relevant. And I think that's okay. Um, whereas there are other issues, uh, say, like the Republic or like First Nations Voice, where I think there is a real potential there to demonstrate relevance to people's lives. Um, and I I I don't really have the answer as to how to do that. I think you need to design a process that matches the issue. So um, and I think that can help. Um, and I think uh if if there is a a practice, I think, of holding. Um, kind of grassroots-type processes, deliberative forums and other things that ordinary people can get involved in and see that they are able to have some influence over. That is, that is going to motivate them to get involved. And I don't think we can make that happen tomorrow by holding one. I think there needs to be just a a kind of a shift in attitude whereby we hold these processes more routinely. Um, uh, for separate issues, perhaps held that kind of once a decade kind of convention where we do a more wholesale review of the constitution, getting a practice of it. So I think we do need to get, we do need to kind of, we need to build up those muscles a little bit. a little bit, both individually and as a political community. I also think we need to hold referendums, is the other thing. And so, why would anyone put too much effort into thinking about constitutional change when we 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 can, we never vote on it anymore, and we kind of, we like to wait until we're absolutely sure that the vote's going to be yes, when I think it's absolutely fine if we we all debate an issue and then there's a there's a disagreement and at the end of the day it's a no vote, and we move on to the next one. So I think kind of, um, we can get in the practice of voting at referendum too. So I think both of those things, um, could help, um, there's no silver bullet, I'm afraid.
Can I, can I ask whether, um, perhaps Dr Harris, um, is this conversation about how to get people interested in, you know, under, in perhaps the more technical amendments, where your point about teaching philosophy and ethics, um, more or better at schools also comes in, um, you know, to give, to pick up the phrase that was just used, you know, to build up Australians' muscles of, um, about having a framework in which to think why some of these things that on the face of it don't look particularly exciting are actually very important?
Yes, I I I very much think that, um, I I mean, if you, you know, some, some legal philosophy is 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 really interesting, there's, there's one school of legal philosophy by a fellow named, uh, John Rawls, um, who says, well, imagine that you were, you didn't know what you were going to be in a future society, man, woman, indigenous, non-indigenous, uh, what your sexual orientation was, and you had to design a constitution or a Bill of Rights, what would you like it to be? And of course, once you've stripped away a person's identity and they don't know what identity they're going to have in the new society, they think in a very different way. So I mean, I think that's a sort of educational tool which which would be really beneficial.
And can I also just come in and say, I think that, I think actually Paul had the answer earlier about how to get people interested, it's more often about values than it is about the specifics, and people rarely know the specifics of the change, but even Paul on section forty-four, the issue of, uh, should someone who is a foreign citizen be entitled to be a member of the federal parliament, that excites enormous interest in the community. And it's it's about who we are as a nation, our identity, are we a nation of migrants, are we a nation of people who only have allegiance here? And again, in my experience, it's all about the framing, but you get the framing right and people, you can't shut them up a lot of the time, they really want to have a say about these things.
Can I ask another question, Chair, if it's all right? It kind of moves a little bit towards then the mechanisms. So if we imagine that we have this system, which sounds terrific, with school...
Lost Peter again.
Lost Peter, yep.
I'll try and, I'll text her to jump off and try and re-join.
Just, just while we're perhaps waiting for, uh, Peter to come back on, um, can I just, um, look at the cultural, uh, issues around, um, the con- the Australian Constitution in comparison to, say, the US Constitution? I was, uh, fortunate enough to visit the, um, US, I think from memory it's called the US Constitutional Museum in Washington DC, uh, a couple of years ago. And, um, there seems to be a much greater awareness, uh, perhaps I'm I'm oversimplifying it and overgeneralizing it, but there seems to be a much greater awareness of the importance of the Constitution, um, in the US than it is here. Would, would anyone like to talk to that at all?
Look, I, I think, I'll just, it it's not, um, an issue I'm a particularly expert in, but I think, you know, and as an observation, um, the presence of the Bill of Rights in the United States, I think, makes a big difference because, uh, it it means that in terms of demonstrating that relevance of the Constitution to people's lives, they're often talking about the rights enshrined in the Bill of Rights, so my freedom of speech and so on and so forth. So I think it helps make that connection. Um, so I think that's often part of it. I think when you look at studies of constitutional knowledge, but and compare Australia and the US, I'm not sure there's that much difference between the two. Um, and also, just my other comment is, um, the, one, there is a strain of thought in the US where the Constitution is to be venerated, to be really put up on a pedestal, which also means that it's kind of to be, you know, wrapped in plastic and never touched. I think that, that that's great for it to be kind of have a bit of profile, but at the same time, you, uh, that's not necessarily helpful, um, either, and that we we wouldn't want to replicate that aspect in Australia, I think it's good to see it as more of a living document.
That's not the, that's not the, the lived experience though in the US. I mean, the US has, I I don't recall how many, uh, successful amendments to the Constitution, but significant, I know they've been around a bit longer than us, but the significantly greater number of amendments to the US Constitution, and there doesn't seem to be the, the reticence in the US to amend the Constitution as we have here.
Oh, I think on, on the contrary, I think a lot of the amendments came early, um, and and I think George, George has looked at this in his book with David Hume, but uh, overall, I think the rate of amendment is about roughly the same as here, um, and it's really slowed down in 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 recent times, uh, yeah.
I think that's right, as, as the US specific become increasingly polarised politically, they found it very hard to get anything out. But but honestly, one thing that strikes me is often Australians know more about the US Constitution than our Constitution.
Yeah.
And I found this in Victoria when I, um, chaired a process down there, and it was whether Victoria was going to get the Charter of Rights, um, most people said Victoria didn't need it because Australia already had a National Bill of Rights. And when I asked them what was in that National Bill of Rights, the first thing they said was freedom of speech, but the second thing they most often said was, they said they knew they could take the fifth if they were in trouble and called. So that was just community knowledge, it could have been, you know, a lot of rural Victorian through to the cities, um, they get their knowledge often from US cop shows.
Well, and Professor Williams, we're all getting emails at the moment, um, variously suggesting that we are being taken to court on the basis of provisions of the US Constitution, I can tell you.
I see it all the time, yeah.
Um, Dr Harris, do you want to jump in there at all, and then we'll go back to Peter Murphy?
Yes, uh, um, I think two, two things strike me about knowledge of the Constitution. When the new Constitution came out in South Africa, anyone could go into a post office and get a little book, it was about that big, printed on very cheap paper in any of the eleven languages you wanted, to get a copy of the Constitution, and that really popularised the Constitution. Um, again, you know, because of the terrible past of apartheid. And a- another example that springs to mind is, um, I read a book recently, um, was titled something like What the Germans Do Very Well, and was all about the achievements in technology, et cetera. And one of the themes of the book was that the person says that many German people are deferential about boasting and putting themselves forward because of the history of the country, but the one thing that they are very, very proud of is the nineteen forty-nine Constitution, because it's cemented in the concept of the individual having responsibility, having rights, but also having responsibility, if necessary, to disobey the law in order to protect those rights. So, you know, that's sort of, again, philosophical attachment to, to the dignity of the individual was something that they were very proud of, and I think that's why we really need to have a values-based education system.
All right, thank you, um, back to you, Ms Murphy.
Thank you, sorry about that. Um, I gather the internet doesn't like me waving my hands around. Um, I was sort of transitioning a little bit, um, and thinking about imagining that we have this system that sounds terrific of all the different conventions and a, and an education system, which, um, enlivens people's knowledge, let alone their interest in, in the Constitution. But how we then go to what you've given evidence about five times, um, Professor Williams, and the other part of this inquiry, which is a mechanism that then gives process to that, um, and doesn't re-go over perhaps all of what's just happened in all of those deliberative engaged processes again, um. So I wonder how you would suggest, um, we might do that? And one of the questions that occurs to me, and I'm just putting this forward as devil's advocate, not necessarily a view of mine, um, but if we've had a process, a deliberative process which has come up with, let's say, um, I'm trying to think of a non-controversial thing, you know, Dr Harris's proposal about every human life has dignity, for example, something that, you know, has come through, clearly has overwhelming support, goes to the Parliament, has overwhelming support, why do we need to have a federally funded and run yes and no case, um, as opposed to here's a proposal we're putting to the people, um, and here's the objective information about it?
And firstly, I think the, the way to take it forward is have the convention report direct to the federal parliament. The convention should have the communique that says, and you might structure the convention, you don't want ten proposals, the convention might put the top three reform proposals to Parliament every ten years, and then we see whether the political support is there to advance one or more of them. Um, and of course, there'll be a lot of momentum behind that, and, but that won't be just a re-agitation of the issues, that will then be testing the political support, um, is it there? Uh, I've also suggested a constitutional commission because I think that's a pretty cheap way of making sure the right proposals are generated, there's education and the like, um, in between the conventions and in a broad political engagement, and that will certainly help. Um, so yeah, I think that's, that's the key for me, send it straight through to Parliament. But I think, I think the missing bit of the conversation we haven't got to is just that even if it gets through Parliament, the referendum machinery legislation is just in very poor shape. We're just not ready to hold a referendum, and I really fear for the Uluru process, that we are heading to the nation's first social media referendum, and yet we have legislation that does not mention a word about how to deal with the quite significant challenges that emerge from that.
Yep.
And as I say, it's drafted pre-radio, um, and the focus is upon this written pamphlet that goes out a week or so before the referendum. I mean, really, that's a pretty hopeless way of dealing with these issues sensibly. We know it's not very effective, but this is where I suppose we look to this committee to say, let's do it, and as Paula said, don't do it in the eve of a campaign, do it now, because as soon as you get to the campaign, it's politicised, it's too difficult, you've got to do it before you've got a particular proposal being considered. This is why the local government referendum fell over in twenty thirteen, we had bipartisan support, but we left the referendum machinery changes to eleventh hour, and bipartisanship broke down over amendments to the Referendum Machinery Act, and then the coalition withdrew their support and the whole thing fell over.
Yeah, no, well, I think that's the second reason that this inquiry, notwithstanding it's slightly repetitive, um, is, is timely, because, um, you know, both sides of politics or both sides of Parliament have said, committed to this two A change to the Constitution, so let's get that machinery fixed. Um, so I I'm very happy with the chairs, you know, the chairs in charge, but getting to that, some of those really detailed machinery things. But I guess my question is slightly, is between getting it to Parliament, right, so your commission's got it to Parliament, or the Uluru process eventually gets it, we get it to Parliament, Parliament agrees, how do we then not have a yes/no case that essentially relitigates something that has already been through that process? Or do you, or is it important that we do?
No, I think you do a bit of that, I mean, we've suggested a referendum panel as one option, puts not just yes and no cases, but neutral information as well. And and I think, you know, one of the key lessons in this area is active engagement and repetition. Now, like any form of political engagement, you can't assume people have got it once, you've got to keep talking about it over and over again, uh, and indeed, the referendum is part of that big national moment. The vote is one thing, but changing perceptions about things is very powerful, and that requires lots of institutions to be engaged for a change that may be with us for a century or more. So I think that's fine to to re- re-agitate and talk more about these things.
And I'd say, in my mind, there are two separate parts to the process, two separate stages. So the first stage, I think you alluded to there, Peter, is, is all about developing a sound proposal and building consensus around a proposal. It doesn't mean a hundred percent of Australians are behind it, but it's a proposal that's been vetted by experts and, uh, different, uh, interest groups and and the general public, and people are generally pretty supportive of it. And then we move to the campaign stage, and I think then it it it, uh, makes sense for the legitimacy of that campaign stage to then, for people to debate the merits of it, to have the yes and no arguments put, um, and and that's, and then on the basis of that, people will vote on the proposal. It, and it, of course, um, a pamphlet might go out, it needn't be federally funded yes and no cases, that's only been done once in nineteen ninety-nine, the federal parliament, if we give, if 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 the Machinery Act was amended to, give it this power, could elect to fund yes and no cases, or it could decide not to fund them depending on the circumstances.
All right, we're going to need to leave it, uh, there, I'm afraid, we've gone over time a little bit because we, uh, we had some technical problems to start off with. So I want to thank you for your attendance at today's hearing. Uh, you will be sent a copy of the transcript of your evidence and you'll have an opportunity to request corrections to transcription errors. Uh, I don't believe you've been asked to provide any additional information, but if you have, could you please forward it to the secretariat within two weeks of receiving the hand-side transcript? Once again, thank you very much for your attendance, uh, today, thank you for your passion about all things constitutional, uh, and, um, uh, thank you also for your written submissions, and, um, we look forward to, to, uh, putting a, uh, a report together which will hopefully take up some of those submissions, uh, some of those recommendations. So thanks very much, and you're now free to, free to leave us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I now welcome representatives of New Democracy Foundation and Citizens for Democratic Renewal to give evidence. Although the committee does not require you to give evidence under oath, I should advise you that this hearing is a legal proceeding of the Parliament and therefore has the same standing as a proceeding of the House. But giving a false or misleading evidence is a serious matter and may be regarded as a contempt of Parliament. For the hand-side record, would you please state your full names and the capacity in which you appear before the committee today? I'll start with you, uh, Mr Barnes. You're on, you're on mute, I think, Mr Barnes.
Sorry, thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to appear, and, uh, we really appreciate that. My name is Glenn Lawrence Lord Barnes, and I appear as the co-chair of Citizens for Democratic Renewal.
Thanks, Mr Barnes, uh, and Mr Walker.
Certainly, thank you, Chair. My name is Ian Walker, I'm the executive director of the New Democracy Foundation.
Thank you. Um, I'm now going to ask my colleagues just to briefly introduce themselves, Deputy Chair. Deputy Chairs may have gone offline for a moment, so, uh, Peter Murphy.
Off a little while.
Um, oh, actually, there she is.
There she is.
Uh, you're on mute, Sharon.
He's just saying good morning and listening intently, thanks for joining us today.
Thank you. Peter Murphy.
Good morning, uh, Member for Dunkley, which is southeast Melbourne, um, basically Frankston area, and very interested in this topic, so thank you very much for participating.
Thank you. Mike Freeland.
Um, hi, I'm Mike Freeland, I represent the seat of Macarthur in southwest Sydney, and of course, the, named after, uh, one of the leading undemocratic figures in Australia. Thanks, thanks for appearing.
Julian Simmons on the law, he's on the telephone.
G'day, Julian Simmons here from, uh, the, uh, from the electorate of Ryan, which is western suburbs of Brisbane, thank you very much for, um, being with us today, and my apologies for having to be on the teleconference rather than video conference.
Thanks, Mr Simmons, uh, and gentlemen, my name is Andrew Wallace, I'm the federal Member for Fisher on the glorious Sunshine Coast. Uh, it is so good to be back home out of Canberra, I have to say, and, uh, I'm the Chair of this august committee. Uh, now, to minimise disruptions to the hearing, I remind members and the witnesses to please use a headset if you have one, uh, and mutual microphone when you're not speaking, if you are disconnected, please reconnect using the details you've been provided with. Uh, I'll now invite you to make a short opening statement, uh, before we proceed to a general discussion. This is a roundtable discussion, so, uh, I want to encourage you to, uh, to to jump in, uh, we will all be sort of firing questions at you fairly indiscriminately, um, and also feel free to, uh, to to comment or challenge, uh, each other. Uh, all right, and we'll start with you, Mr Walker.
Thank you. As an opening statement, there's, there's really three ideas that I'm hoping to convey to you today. Firstly, the committee, look at Ireland. Ireland wanted to do a comprehensive constitutional review, uh, starting in twenty-ten and twenty-eleven, and they started that by simply asking the wider citizenry what parts of our Constitution need to change. And the reason that's important is it stopped right from the start, it was seen as being owned by the community rather than being a political case to prosecute. Uh, the second point that I'd, I'd suggest for you is speak to Art O'Leary. Art O'Leary was the Secretary General to the Irish President, who had carriage of this, his insight and experience is something that we've seen other MPs, for example, in the New South Wales Parliament, uh, respond well to, uh, given the nature of that job that he's had. Uh, example, the-
Example that we use, Ireland had a right to life enshrined in the constitution. While we don't have, we don't take any issue positions on any topic, most MPs, regardless of their view, can see that reforming abortion law in very Catholic Ireland, when it's also embedded in the constitution, has a very high degree of difficulty. And they use the mechanism of randomly selected citizens in long-term deliberation to really change the public discourse from what were the traditional nature of debate. The third point I'd encourage you to think about is a convention involving randomly selected citizens is a great first step. It's not something to do at the end, it's something that you would use to start and have those people, blue collar, white collar, no collar, standing in front and explaining in their own words what they see in the constitution that may need to be changed. So I hope to expand on those three points, but I'll leave my opening statement there. Thank you, Chair. Thanks very much, Mr Walker. Mr Barnes?
Thank you, Chairman. Firstly, I'd just like to set the scene a little bit by saying, why do we think change is necessary? For a number of years now, many people have commented and alluded upon the slow deterioration in the level of public engagement and trust in our country's governance systems. And although members of the various governance systems and politicians in private agree that there are issues to worry about, publicly and in general, these are passed off as being transient issues. We were very concerned when the Senate Legal and Constitutional Affairs References Committee, which reported earlier this year, documented the facts behind these concerns, but then thought that education of senior secondary students was going to be the way to address the problem. And we really think that this is not a robust or urgent enough response to the issues. There's also been a recent study done by the New Democracy Foundation using core data regarding trust of politics in Australia. And they gave very damning results of Australian politics and the governance outcomes produced by our politicians. And I'll just quote just a few facts that are concerning. More than 85% of those surveyed believed Australia's political processes failed to deliver outcomes that represent reasonable compromises, outcomes that are truly in the public interest, evidence-based, well-considered policies and legislation, and outcomes that truly consider and incorporate the views of everyday Australians. I would put to you that, given this information, it is highly unlikely that the electorate would pass any referendum proposal solely framed by politicians today. That doesn't mean there aren't ways of better engaging the public and drawing into the process and rebuilding the trust in our political systems. And Ian's already mentioned the Irish process. Our proposal would be to put in place a permanent constitutional council that basically does what George Williams was suggesting earlier. Not a constitutional council that, as some of those in Europe does, replaces the role of the High Court. We believe we have perfectly satisfactory mechanisms there. But a group who are seen as free of strong political influence, who can look at constitutional change, advocate for the change and put a proposal to the parliament to go through the normal processes of referendum. Thank you very much for the opportunity to comment and I'm happy to back up any of what I've said.
Thanks very much, Mr Barnes. I, if any of my colleagues want to kick us off, just put your hand up and we'll go straight to you.
I'm always happy to, you know how much I love this topic, Chair.
There you go.
Gentlemen, I'm going to start by asking you a question which isn't one that either of you touch on deeply in your submissions and it may not be one that you have much to say on, but we sort of ended the last session just before we got to some of the discussion about actually the mechanisms in the referendum act. So you may have watched, we had a very interesting, I think, conversation about some of the things that you've both raised. How to get people better educated and involved. But then ended with, I think, the important warning that there's some mechanical or administrative issues that really do need to be addressed before we put the next question to the people, particularly if the next question is the incredibly important one about voice. So I just wondered whether either of you wanted to talk about perhaps some of the mechanics of putting the question or devising the campaigns of the question before we go back to that interesting and important conversation about engaging the citizenry.
Ian, do you want to go first?
I'm just going to pick Glenn because he spoke.
Okay. There are many mechanisms for engaging the citizenry. Before one starts framing a constitutional question, a referendum question, putting it to the public. The Constitutional Convention run in Ireland, which eventually ended up in citizens' juries, which have been used in many locations over recent years and Ian can talk more knowingly to the mechanisms with that, to develop a consensus within a population and a momentum from change. I think also in New Zealand, an interesting mechanism used by John Key was when they needed a major tax and social safety net change. He gave Victoria University a brief to speak to the people of New Zealand, not to speak to the politicians, speak to the people of New Zealand about the options that were available to them. And after a prolonged period of dialogue between the academics and the people put into Victoria University to support them, the New Zealand population, basically at the two-thirds level, said, yeah, that seems to make sense. John Key drew that back then into the parliamentary processes and the politicians legislated a response that generally seemed to meet the confines of what was put to the population. In Ireland, of course, the Constitutional Convention that ended up in a citizens' jury had that controversial abortion clause in the Irish constitution that nobody thought would ever be taken out. After prolonged discussion in the citizens' jury, that referendum got passed by a two-thirds majority of the Irish population. I think it's a great example of how attitudes can change. Ian can give you some other examples used in local councils in Australia and other jurisdictions. Basically, it is a mechanism of fomenting public discussion and giving people in the electorate the feeling that people like me have actually been heard in this discussion and have contributed towards the end solution for the common good. It's only in big, complex issues I believe you need to use this process. I think to a certain extent, the government have been running a quasi-version of this with all the various conversations that have gone on about the voice. But I personally think to bring it to a really consolidated approach to how we handle it, we need a mechanism that draws the broader populace into the discussion and has wide publicity of the considerations.
Yeah, thank you Glenn and Ian, I don't want to restrict you, but I guess I was also wanting to go that step deeper then as the more technical, if you wanted to comment on more technical reforms, perhaps that are in some of the other submissions about how we then, having had that process, go about drafting the question, getting it through the parliament and then, as you know, Professor Williams said, the current act doesn't really contemplate a social media campaign, should it? Those sorts of really quite, that's what I mean by mechanical questions about the actual conduct.
Sure, thank you for the question. The mechanism is intended to be complementary, think of things occurring in sequence. Everything I want to talk to today would precede the normal natural process that the last 45 odd referenda have gone through. Out of a long-form citizen deliberation, the questions will naturally emerge, the topics and the framing will naturally emerge. The point of intersection where the two come together, I'd encourage the committee to look at the process that occurs in Oregon. The task they give to citizens is to write the information queue. So in across the west coast of the US, they've come up with what they thought was going to be a tremendous mechanism, which is turned into a disaster, the citizens-initiated referendum. I won't spend excess time on that, except that they tend to just be won by whoever spends the most money on advertising. The legislature in Oregon, in a bipartisan vote, started to ask, they put any potential referendum topic in front of 24 citizens they've picked at random. They give them approximately four months. In that specific instance, they simply say to citizens, express your view on the pros and cons and they will send out a simple two-page sheet. The key element in this is it is simply written by people from all walks of life. And that's the point that they use. Once you then click into what specific mechanism, we don't foresee any change or difference. We also don't foresee a conflict because as you note, so much of the constitution is silent on elements such as this.
Okay, thank you. Chair, I'm happy, I see again Dr Freeland's virtual hand is up, so I'm happy to let others ask questions now if that suits you, Chair.
Thanks, Ms Murphy. Dr Freeland. Are you on mute, Mike?
Very thanks for your time today. Just very briefly, I think a lot of what you're saying, I hate to say it misses the point a bit, I think that we're preaching a lot to the elites and we're not really looking how we can communicate to the broad range of the Australian population. We can't run a referendum campaign these days properly, I think, without including social media. You can't rely on the usual channels of my generation to get the information. I think that we really do need fundamental change in this. Have you thought about how we can do that?
Thank you. I'll take that question if I may. Thank you, Dr Freeland. I think what people want to see, and we can demonstrate this through project examples, so I'm happy to follow up with evidence, is they actually, more than social media, what is the content for social media? You want to see people you identify with talking to the issue. So to make up an illustrative example, having people who are, you know, off the job site, you know, not the people you normally see on the news, saying, I've never looked at this before. I've discovered the section 44 issue is pretty unfair for reasons A, B and C. And for that reason, I think a change is needed. That's why I'm trying to say it's sequential. Because it is their voices, action, that will be what you want to share on social media. Arguably more than the traditional think tanks, the traditional left-right push. It is that point of difference. And it's that point of difference, what you describe is what occurred in Ireland. And I'm happy to supply a couple of videos of this, but there was a fabulous example of a gentleman approximately 60 years of age, who was a truck driver, who said, I've always had my views. You know, I've never really thought about them, I just knew I didn't like it. And then having to hear the case of actually hearing what was happening to people's lives, it's made me think a bit and changed my mind. That piece came from having a citizen actually take 60 hours to explore the issue. He felt such ownership of it that he was happy to talk to a camera and that then gave you the content to distribute on social media. So I hope that gives Chair some light on that question.
Sure, thanks. Glenn, would you like to comment on it?
I totally support what Ian's talking about. I should say, though Citizens for Democratic Renewal are separate from and separately funded from the New Democracy Foundation, our work has overlapped over a number of years and so I've been following the developments both with citizens' juries, the work done by the New Democracy Foundation and other groups who are using similar techniques. But I totally agree with Ian, it's producing the content that then whatever media is active amongst the social groups can pick up and use to develop discussion and persuasion with regard to a case for a particular change.
Good, okay, thanks. Mr Walker, can I take you to your submissions? In your submissions, you, and this won't come as any great surprise to anybody, but you talk about the frustration that people are feeling with, that comes from disengagement. And you suggest that that, you know, the way that some of the European countries are engaging more at a grassroots level seems to overcome that. But is that actually true? I mean, aren't we seeing just as much dissatisfaction or social discord, if I can put it that way, in European countries, particularly through COVID? And that may be a, it may be an unusual circumstance to draw upon, but I just want to test that theory of yours.
Without giving a repetitious answer, we do just point at Ireland inasmuch as it is a nice example of, and the law changed. I think anyone who sits in front of you with a silver bullet should be the first person to disconnect from the call. It is a complimentary piece. There's one evidence point I'd like to offer you because it's easy to check. In 2011, you may recall that the New South Wales state election was very one-sided in favour of the Liberal and National Parties. There were local government elections scheduled one year after that. There's approximately 150 local government areas at that time around New South Wales. We were retained for a project with a Labor mayor, so City of Canada Bay, who gave us a task essentially saying, balance the budget. Now, the reason I raise it is because you can look at the election results which follow. 149 swung to the Liberal Party. That mayor increased his primary vote. Now, no one can claim causality, but we do have a one in 150, the correlation is very high. The point that the local mayor, Angelo Turek, has made to us, he said, no one understands what you guys do, but they see people like themselves in the middle of the decision and they like it. So I'd encourage you to take a look at the election statistics from that point to say that clearly some trust was built in leadership by having a very visible role. And to Dr Freeland's earlier point, absolutely. How did we scale that? It was the Daily Telegraph covered it, the Sydney Morning Herald covered it a few times and it was the one-minute video vignettes of people talking saying, I got handed the budget, I was allowed to do anything, I was allowed to go through it, they started to own it. We could see a trust bump through that. Yes, I would argue that Ireland is in a better position as a result of this. Some of the other examples I've used are, they're still in their first handful of projects, it's probably likely to show a dividend over the long term. So I can't give you a perfect answer, but hopefully that sheds some light.
Thanks, Mr Walker. Mr Barnes, do you want to jump in there at all?
I think it comes back to understanding just what's happened to our democracy. The founders of our federation gifted us with one of the best liberal democracies in the world, as is judged today. Unfortunately, in the time since our federation was formed, our processes have been too rigid. All around our governance systems, there have been changes to business models and the way people communicate with each other. Unfortunately, we're sticking to some very rigid protocols, I think, within our political system that has led to this community disengagement. If I was running a company and I received a result that said, one quarter of those surveyed thought we were responsive to our customers, we were consultative, we're efficient and effective and balanced and fair, I'd go into panic mode and basically have a crisis committee meeting. That's what people are saying about our political processes. They're not demonising the individual politicians and the desire they have to run the country. They are concerned that our governance system has got out of sync with its ability to listen to and communicate with the populace. We don't have to destroy our system and build it from the ground up. We just need to find better ways for politicians to link with the community, mainly on big, complex issues and the big, complex issues that quite often politicians aren't addressing today because within the rather tough political environment you folks work within, we seem to have lost the art of compromise and balance in a way that the electorate can understand you're trying to take us forward to a better place. And what we're talking about is finding mechanisms for politicians to better align with the electorate. Yes, there are some hygiene factors, like federal ICAC and visibility of funding of politicians that need to be cleaned up. We believe we need to get back to more evidence-based policy in the old way we used to do it on large issues of green and white papers in the old way we used to do it on large issues of green and white papers, rather than fait accompli being brought towards the public. But the most important issue is the one Ian's advocating. It's setting up some forums where we have a difficult issue, we want to take the community forward on and take them forward in harmony to the common good solution that most can live with. We need to find some mechanisms to do that. And specifically coming back to the referendum issues, which, you know, really are the pointy end of this whole discussion. Because they're so big, because distrust is so high, we do need to get the community being seen to be behind the push for change, not something that is hatched within a closed political system.
Yes, Mr. Walker. Sorry, thank you, just to build off that point. I think it's helpful to think of what the hardest problem in this is, and it's the public opinion environment. In the constitutional issues it would seem you want to address in terms of section 44, in terms of a potential republic, in terms of the voice, they're complex. And we work on this phenomenon called rational ignorance. If you're one of 17 million voters, your rational choice is not to read, it's not to think, it's to go play golf, work in your garden, spend time with your children. And yet, the issues you want to address actually require people to think in some depth. And hence, the logic behind the mechanism we're suggesting is, I can't get 17 million people to read something, but we are fantastic at getting 50 or 100 people to read something. And if you present a very complex case, which these briefing documents frequently span three, 400 pages, we can get 50 or 100 people to read them. And if they then distill them in their own words, that is how we start to educate a greater part of the population. And that's the magic part of the mechanism. So I just wanted to add that. Thank you, Chair.
So just on that point, to pick up something that Dr. Freeland was talking about earlier, is there a perceive, a perception or an actual bias in that model that you just talked about then to appealing to the elites rather than, you know, everyday people? You know, you use the example yourself, Mr. Walker, that most people, you know, would probably prefer to go and play golf or spend time with their kids than read an in-depth paper on why we should be doing this or why we shouldn't be doing that. So doesn't that then push this process towards a more intellectual elite type of person?
It's a great question, and I've got a three-part answer for you. Firstly, absolutely, our initial projects, we run about 25 demonstration projects now. The initial projects skewed high. So we do stratified random selection, basically a random selection where you tell the randomisation software, "Make it random, but 50/50 male and female. Make it random, it follows census profile by age." And the first three projects, we could see far too many university-educated people in there. We started asking stratification questions around income and education. And I can assure you, that's not a question Australians answer honestly. Everyone was a doctor earning a million bucks. And so, but this is the joy of being a research foundation, is you work to check this. In about our fifth project, we asked people if they own or rent where they live. Now, that is a question you ask honestly. It is an excellent surrogate indicator of income and education. It is not perfect. Yes, we occasionally pick up a barrister with a city apartment, you know, and a country house. It's not perfect, but it's good. We could immediately start to see that blue-collar, white-collar, no-collar shift. Another variance, because it leads from your question, is people with English language skills. We run a very high-information process. What we've tended to see, we operated a project for the Moorbank Intermodal Company, which is a federal government agency related to a freight train site. And we went there to test our recruitment. We picked a 24-person jury, 23 different backgrounds. What we found is that where there is lower language skills, people pass the invitations to their children because it will land at a household. So it's not perfect, but we do get very representative groups. So there are mechanisms, I do address it. The last point I'd like to leave with you is, an average project will get a 5% to 10% response rate. We've done a project in the past, actually a citizens' parliament in 2009 at Federal Parliament House, when 6,000 invitations were sent out randomly to Australians. And with no imprimatur from a committee or from the parliament, 38% of Australians put up their hand and said, "Yes, I'll give you six days, I'll do that." The point I'd like to land is, if you make the offer powerful, if someone could open their letterbox and say, "This is worth my time", then you can get it. And when you're one of 50 people with a line to this committee or another group, yes, you think most people want to have a say. We're simply thinking about the incentives that make it worth their time. Thank you. I'm sorry, Mike.
Doctors are not highly paid.
Not barristers have country houses either, but yeah.
Too many stereotypes in one piece. Thank you for picking me up.
I want to just follow up on a line of questioning that Peter Murphy was talking about. And it goes towards the more practical approaches. Now, you've given us some, what some might say are, I don't want to use the term radical, but it's a radical shift in mindset for Australia about involving the citizenry. But what I'd really like to hear from you, and I think Peter would as well, is what are some of the actual changes that we could make to the mechanism act which governs the way that these referenda are gone about? Rather than the, I'm not downplaying at all in any way what you're saying about involving citizens at all. I'm not downplaying that. But can you give us some suggestions on what some of the changes? There's been a fairly broad consensus so far this morning that the mechanisms by which referenda are conducted in Australia, I think the Act goes back to 1914, if I remember correctly. And they are very outdated, they even predate radio. What should we be recommending in this committee to government about changes to the mechanism by which referenda are conducted?
If I could raise to that and reprise where I'd come to, rather than just having ad hoc bodies start the process for referendum, I believe we should have a referendum council whose role it is to be the studies of the constitution and aiming to keep it contemporary to our society. And where a desired change is suggested, they take the process on. And we've talked about the voice as a particular issue that is worthy of thinking. We've got section 44, et cetera. Basically, a body that is not seen as a political vehicle of government, but a body that's seen as being capable of leading a discussion in the community. So you'd probably have a George Williams on that. You'd probably have one or two long-retired, experienced and respected politicians on that group. And their role would be to lead the public discussion. It'd be their decision, I think, as to whether you needed a citizens' jury to address a particular issue or use other mechanisms. But their role is to seek out ways and means of engaging the public in the discussion and being the arbiters of whether we've reached sufficient commonality of view in the public to actually move to a referendum. They also, I believe, should be given the responsibility of formulating the wording of the referendum to take away the suspicions that there is going to be some sort of hidden trick in this inserted by politicians. The referendum then goes through the normal processes that we have already depicted in our constitution. So it doesn't disempower our politicians. It doesn't fundamentally stop the process of how a referendum goes through. But what you do is you get this independent voice of working out whether there is an issue and advocating how the issue should be addressed.
Can I just get you, sorry, can I just get you to clarify, Mr. Barnes? And that, and I'm not trying to, you know, get you to know your colours to the mast. I'm just trying to get you to elaborate a little bit. The makeup of that body seemed to me to be, you know, somewhat, you know, elitist in that, you know, you've got constitutional law experts, you've got, you know, previous politicians. You know, that doesn't sound to me like it's a grassroots body.
That's a fair criticism of what I just said. My suggestion is that we need to do a lot of work as to how we structure that and populate that to have the confidence of the community. And I think we would probably end up with a structure of that council very similar to the structure we have for a citizens' jury. So people can relate to it, that, you know, there is somebody like me on that. It's not just a group of elites making this decision. But I haven't had the time or the resources to really work out what the public would deem as being a body that I would trust. So your criticism is correct, it's a gap. But I think it's a gap that can be covered if that's the way we went. Just as if we put together a special body for a particular referendum, we'd have to think about the same issue. My view is, rather than thinking over time and time again, having a council in place who look at our constitution, and all of us know our constitution needs a lot of revision. There've been massive number of workarounds, either through the courts or by other means, since our constitution was struck. And it needs some serious work done on it.
I understand what you're saying. And I wanted to just try and direct your thinking more towards some of the practical mechanisms by which, you know, should we, for instance, have a yes and no case funded by the Commonwealth? Should there be caps placed on disclosure levels? Should there be, you know, should we be able to utilise social media? And all those sorts of things. Do either of you have any views on the practical ways by which we should be amending the mechanisms by which referenda are conducted?
I think, sorry, go on then. I think in, even if we didn't set up a constitutional council, by having a dialogue to do with it, all of those issues would get washed out. And, you know, if you wrote a brief for this constitutional council, they're the sorts of issues that would need to be covered off. I certainly think it should be given the mandate to make sure both the yes and no vote issues, the various points of view are given fair and even discussion within the community. And that's the way you move towards a consensus. I think if we don't have a public outing of the discussion and done in such a way that the general community become aware of what's going on and why and conform an opinion, it would be a waste of time and effort.
All right, Mr. Walker.
My short answer is, I'd very much encourage you to connect with what occurred in Ireland. And I realise I'm turning into a one-trick pony in that regard. The key starting point for their mechanism, and this occurred by accident, was that they took 66 people at random and had them work with 33 MPs on a cross-party basis. And the reason that's such a core part of the mechanism is that you could start, this simply doesn't occur normally in our political system. It's a critical part of the mechanism to building two-way trust. MPs saw a group of people who are maybe different to who knocks on the door of your electorate office. They saw people taking the task seriously, able to learn and question. They found it really complimentary. Equally, huge trust dividend from having 66 people spend 40 or 50 hours with an MP and emerge saying this works pretty, you know, these are different people to what I normally see on television. No, we don't have distinct views on things like advertising and funding cases. The point I would note from that example, the Irish used this mechanism because they didn't want a very simplistic yes-no war going on in terms of a traditional campaign. It's ugly, it's bad for our society. We have democracy to have social cohesion, and we run these campaigns that try to tear apart. The interesting part from the Irish example is that they exit polled voters after the Eighth Amendment abortion law referendum. A tick under 50% could reference that there was a citizens' assembly and that it influenced their vote. The critical part for us is they asked a follow-up question and asked them to nominate, you know, something that those citizens had recommended that influenced their vote. And they determined that about 40% of voters were aware of it. If I look at the rest of your question as being about education and communications mechanisms, we see it as a new mechanism worth introducing, particularly in a febrile social media environment, one where there's mistrust of experts. You actually need this ability for people outside the political system to say, "Hang on, that's not true." So while you'll have a series of traditional mechanisms, the role that this has played in Ireland and highly effectively in Oregon is that ability to add a new kind of communication in the era where people are listening only to that which they already agree with.
Can I ask something arising sort of from that? In that, correct me if I'm wrong, but, I mean, what I take from what both of you gentlemen are saying in effect is, this sort of citizen-involved deliberative process is a way to answer some of the concerns about conduct of referendum without necessarily having to change the referendum act itself. But it would sit next to some of those changes as well. So I understand that. But then I think the other concern, not concern, but the other question that we have is, let's take for granted perhaps that there's a system of deliberative citizen-involved, citizen involvement. Then are there other things that we actually should be looking at? So, you know, other submissions have talked about regulating financial donations, you know, caps on donations to campaigners. Should there be an official yes and an official no campaign appointed à la the referendum on the Republic, which gets funding? Or should there simply be the objective information about what's happening from the government and then groups can go and campaign on their own? Should they be subject to the same sort of disclosure laws as political parties? And what would be the role, you know, should the role of political parties be regulated? Like, are they things that you've thought about next to what, you know, where you've got to? Which I get about how we might get to the question and how that will improve trust and involvement and so forth. Do we also need to regulate the other side of it better?
As a democratic reform foundation, I think we're alone in that we actually generally don't particularly care about political donations. And the reason for that is, and this falls into that general category as well, is that money will always influence votes. No matter how you regulate it, it will trickle through the cracks. If you ban advertising, then people pour money into editorial and other forms of content. It's, you're trying to catch a bucket of water with a sieve, trying to limit the influence of money on these campaigns. People will set up grassroots organisations or door-knocking organisations. It becomes, in our view, an almost impossible task. So without negating what other people have said, we just don't see it as having particularly high impact. Appreciating Dr. Freeland's point about social media, et cetera. Yeah, there's obvious procedural items around there about how you communicate it. But the more difficult problems lie in the fact that we think citizens will tune out or go to their social media sources that may not be as legitimate and see a conspiracy where one does not exist. So we're not trying to be obtuse on your question. We just don't see those financial questions as the primary importance.
Essentially, you say that what you're really focused on is the processes that you put forward as saying, get citizens involved, increase their trust and capacity. And what happens around that, happens around it. But the core is your proposals, which, you know, I think broadly speaking, people are attracted to, depending on what the model is, but of getting Australians more actually involved.
Exactly. And in fact, I'm rather neutral on the model I put forward. Exactly, and, and in fact, I, I'm rather neutral on the model I put forward the constitutional council because it gave us a permanent way of addressing the issue. But the, the big issue is to get the debate going and have that debate seen by the electorate and seeing the input of citizens like me. And as Ian said, I don't think you can stop the Clive Palmer's or whoever funding things around the, the fringe of it, that, that's the way life goes. But I, I think there are people far better skilled than I to look at those mechanisms and where too much is too much, if you, for whatever, a better term.
I wonder if your organisations have any views and it, you might, we're about to wrap up, I think, but I don't think it's in your submission, but about how we might start this process before an actual constitutional convention, you know, in terms of civics education or getting into schools and addressing some of Dr Freeland's and my concerns about ensuring that if we're to move down a process which is a more of an engaged discussion, which is terrific, that we're actually engaging everyone and not just middle-aged white people or people who are privileged or fortunate enough to, you know, have great educations.
I, I've got a, a very strong view on that. I, I basically studied STEM subjects but did social studies as a, an extra subject in Victoria in the 1960s. And looking at political systems and how they work was part of that subject. It was one of the richest pieces of learning I had in my education, as well as commercial principles in practice, I think that I did in Form Three. They took me through life and I, I do think there is a part to play for education in this process. Education at schools, education of new citizens, et cetera. But I don't think that's going to break the back of the very difficult nexus we're in in this day and age. I do think we need some process, be it an embracing of citizens' juries or special panels or constitutional councils, to take some of the decision-making to be seen to be outside what's seen as a toxic political pot. And, and I'm sorry about using such strong terms, but the, the research says, you know, all you folks are doing all this good work and you're not appreciated, it's, people are rejecting it. This is just pure politics, politicians serving their own ends. We've got to see the, the emergence of these, the solution to these issues coming from the community. And it's finding a mechanism on the important issues to have a broad community debate so most people can relate to them and can't turn off and say, oh, that's just politics, I have nothing to do with it, which is unfortunately what we're seeing.
I think, in, in, when I think of it, how do you actually spread this message? If I could paint a little picture, notionally, you may run, as a starting point, some kind of citizens' convention on what needs to change about the constitution. They're given one task, to explain what they think needs to change. What generally emerges is a 16 to 20 page report. I wanted a picture waking up on a Sunday morning and getting that as a TV guide style insert in the Sunday papers and distribute it elsewhere. It's the sheer novelty of a democratic innovation that would probably cause you to love. That same piece written by these citizens that we've picked from around the country can absolutely also be used in schools as an activity. It's a starting point, that's the critical piece there. I think it also, what we see overcome is that citizens write in very plain language that often our bureaucracies don't feel as comfortable saying. So you do get a very natural distillation of the issues and challenges in the pro con cases that is otherwise difficult to generate. People don't engage with a lot of this content because it's dry and boring and not relevant to their lives. What these juries have been proven to be very effective at is grounding it in why it matters to them and that's what we connect with. So that's why we see this, this midway piece that informs actually how you, how you go about communicating to the community.
Thank you.
Can, can you folks, can you folks hear me okay?
I can now.
All right, I've just had to swap technology over, so I'm hoping this, this will work okay. All right, look, that's all we have time for now. I want to thank you very much for your attendance this morning and, and thank you very much for your submissions as well. Just be with me two seconds please. You'll be sent a copy of the transcript of your evidence and you'll have an opportunity to request corrections to any transcription errors. If you've been asked to provide any additional information, could you please forward that to the secretariat within two weeks of receiving the Hansard transcript? Now, Shenya, gentlemen, you're now free to go, so thank you very much for your attendance and your assistance today. Shenya, can you just give me an indication of whether our next witnesses are online? Thank you.
Not yet, Chair. I was waiting for your guidance on that.
Okay, sorry, I've, I've been trying to fiddle technology here. So it looks like Sean Burke has joined us now. But we have a number of people that were coming online, so we might just, just break for a few minutes. So let's say to my colleagues, we'll come back at 11:05. So I would suggest just leave your, your, your connections open and maybe, you know, make sure your microphones are muted and your videos are turned off and we'll come back at 11:05, give all of the other witnesses an opportunity to come online. Thanks very much and I'll just temporarily suspend the proceedings. From representatives of New Democracy Foundation, sorry, my, no, that's not correct. It's, proceedings are now resumed, I now welcome representatives of the Australian Republic Movement, the, the University of New South Wales Indigenous Law Centre, Australians for Constitutional Monarchy and Women for an Australian Republic to give evidence. Although the committee does not require you to give evidence under oath, I should advise you that this hearing is a legal proceeding of the parliament and therefore has the same standing as a proceeding of the House. The giving of false or misleading evidence is a serious matter and may be regarded as a contempt of Parliament. For the Hansard record, would you please state your full names and the capacity in which you appear before the committee? And to assist you, I'll name out the organisations. So the Australian Republican Movement.
Yes, my name's Sandy Byer, I'm the CEO and National Director of the Australian Republic Movement.
Thanks, Mr Byer. UNSW?
Hi, my name's Professor Gabrielle Appleby and I'm a member of the Indigenous Law Centre and appearing here in my personal capacity.
Okay, can I, is it Professor Apple, Appleby?
Yes, that's right.
And we don't have Megan Davis with us?
Megan is attempting to join, she's just sent me another text. I think by the time we finish our introduction, she will be with us, my apologies, Chair.
No, no, not at all, no, just want to make sure we've got the right people online. Now, Australians for Constitutional Monarchy?
I'm David Edward Flint and I'm National Convenor and I have three colleagues with me.
Would you like to introduce them, Mr, Professor Flint?
Certainly, Sean Burke and we have Young Ambassadors Sean Jacobs and Daniel Lahoot.
Excellent, well, welcome to you all. And Women for an Australian Republic?
Hello, I'm Sarah Brash and I'm the National Convenor, Convenor of Women for an Australian Republic.
Excellent, thank you very much, Ms Brash. Well, my name's Andrew Wallace, I'm the federal member for Fisher on the Sunshine Coast and I'm the Chair of this committee. And I'm just going to briefly invite my colleagues just to introduce themselves to you, Pen Murphy.
Hello, everyone, I'm the Member for Dunkley, which is Frankston in South East Melbourne. Thank you all for giving up your time to be part of this discussion today.
Mike Freeland.
Hi, I'm Mike Freeland, I'm the Member for Macarthur, which is in South West Sydney. Thanks for joining us today and thanks for your valuable time, which very interested to hear what you've got to say, so thanks very much.
Thanks, Dr Freeland. And Julian Simmons is on the telephone line, so he'll be a bit scratchy.
Yeah, thanks very much, Julian Simmons, Federal Member for Ryan, which is western suburbs of Brisbane, thanks very much for being with us and again, apologies for being on the teleconference rather than video.
Thanks, Mr Simmons. I think that's it, but if any of my other colleagues are on the line, just, just give us a shout out so I can get you to say hello. I don't think there are. All right, to minimise disruptions to the hearing, I remind members of the witnesses to please use a headset if you have one, mute your microphones when you're not speaking, if you are disconnected, please reconnect using the details you've been provided with. The way that we've conducted the, the hearing so far this morning and more, perhaps even more importantly for this one with the large number of people we've got is that it will be a, a generally a fairly free-flowing discussion. I'm going to invite each organisation to make a brief opening statement and, and then we'll proceed to a general discussion. You'll be getting questions fired at you from left, right and centre and that's not talking politically. So feel free to jump in and, and respond to, to any questions or, or each other. All right, now, we just invite you to make a brief opening statement. Mr Byer, would you like to kick us off?
Yeah, thank you and thanks for the opportunity to contribute to the committee's deliberations today. We believe that this inquiry is, is really quite important and timely. And so today we wanted to expand on the four areas of reform that we brought to the committee's attention in our submission. And the first of which is the importance of civics education. And I know you've had a conversation about that earlier today with committee. From our point of view, an informed citizenry is one of the fundamental pillars of our democracy. And in recent years, polls have highlighted the low levels of awareness about the Australian Constitution, even in relation to its very existence. There's also a very low level of awareness about Australia's system of government, including awareness about the roles of its core institutions like the Parliament, the judiciary, our head of state, and the role of the Governor General as the Queen's Representative to Australia. And unless Australians have a foundational level of knowledge about Australia's government and constitution, participation in our democratic institutions and, and decision-making is going to be limited. The ideal should be to reduce the barriers to participation and decision-making for all Australians. And an informed citizenry not only makes, makes our democracy more resilient, but reduces the burden on government by allowing greater individual initiatives. We believe that an increased focus on civics education would, or should include expanded civics education in schools, but also for the broader public. If public awareness campaigns are left to the period immediately before a referendum, their impact is going to be limited. Civics education should be an ongoing process to lift the overall level of participation and political awareness in the decision-making process. And consistent with this, we believe that every Australian should have the opportunity to participate in elections and referendum and we should remove the barriers to that participation. So if a voter wishes to cast their vote by post, we believe they should be entitled to do so. And this shouldn't just be limited to the circumstances within the current eligibility criteria, but open to all Australians. And again, we should be trying to remove as many barriers as possible to their participation. And likewise, the committee may wish to consider the use of electronic voting, especially for voters who may otherwise be disadvantaged by traditional polling methods, including in voters in regional areas. We note that there's a precedent for this in New South Wales through the use of iVote, which involves electronic and telephone voting for vision impaired and, and silent electors and those who would otherwise be unable to vote without assistance and those that live more than 20 kilometres away from a polling place. And it's enabled many voters who'd otherwise need assistance to cast a secret ballot for the very first time. Further to that, a further barrier to casting an informed vote is misinformation and disinformation. And Australia and Western democracies have seen an unprecedented level recently, an increase in foreign actors trying to meddle in, in our democratic discourse, fostering division and, and trying to shape public opinion in their interests. And this is compounded by low levels of civic awareness, which increase the susceptibility of Australians to foreign disinformation campaigns. And the Australian Parliament, Parliament rightly passed laws prohibiting foreign donations to political campaigns participating in Australian elections and they did that in, in 2019. And the same should be done for referenda campaigns. And the Australian Republican Movement believes there's no justifiable reason to allow foreign donors to influence the outcome of Australian referenda and we shouldn't risk leaving our constitution and leaving it susceptible to manipulation by foreign actors. Steps should also include, in our view, the expansion of the registration of political campaigners to referenda campaigns, to ensure there's transparency about who's attempting to influence the outcome of Australia, Australian referendum. So finally, we also believe that the underlying assumption that political parties and parliamentarians will be the primary actors in the conduct of referenda, we don't believe that holds true any longer. Increasingly, modern proposals for constitutional reform across party lines and at times divide parties, in these campaigns, parties are unlikely to take a lead role in the advocacy of particular proposals or to oppose them. And despite their support or opposition to a proposal, parliamentarians might not be best placed or have the resources to effectively prosecute the campaign for or against a proposition. And a more contemporary approach is the one that was taken in the 99 referenda, which included the formation of yes and no committees. And these campaign committees should be provided with the same means to advocate or oppose an initiative as parliamentarians and political parties currently receive through the Referendum Machinery Provisions Act of 1984. So thank you for your time today and I look forward to addressing any questions you may have.
Thanks very much, Mr Byer. We'll now go to Professor Gabriella Appleby from UNSW Indigenous Law Centre.
Thank you very much, Chair, and thank you to the committee for this invitation to join the roundtable and to elaborate on our submission. I would just like to apologise in advance to the Chair and the committee if I have to leave early as I have a teaching commitment at 12 and I fear I cannot leave 30 enthusiastic federal constitutional law students without a teacher at that time. So I apologise if I have to jump off before the hearing is completed. So I'm just going to make some very brief opening remarks and really just direct members to the submission that has been written by my colleagues, Professor Megan Davis, Associate Professor Sean Brennan, Dr Dylan Lino and myself for the Indigenous Law Centre. The submission has been written particularly in the context of the background work that's been done by us and others at the Indigenous Law Centre towards the development of a particular constitutional reform proposal. And that's a reform proposal for meaningful recognition of First Nations through a First Nations voice, as articulated in the Uluru Statement from the Heart, following the regional dialogues and the First Nations Constitutional Convention. We've taken a particular interest in the work and the terms of reference of this committee because we believe that for any future constitutional referendum to succeed, the rulebook for conducting referendums must be in a fit and modern state. To assist the committee, we've developed a set of two criteria against which we believe any rulebook should be assessed. These are, first, that it meets the government's responsibility to provide citizens with objective and fair information on any proposed referendum. Second, that the Australian people are able to communicate freely and transparently with each other about that, about that referendum proposal. So in the submission, we make a number of specific reform proposals to try to bring the current rulebook into line with these criteria. We have a particular focus on, first, the need to reform the question-setting process. We think it needs reform so that we result in a question that is easily understood by the Australian voters, many of whom, the reality is, will be coming to this question for the first time in, when they come to vote. So it needs to capture the essential nature of the reform. It needs to be clear, it needs to be simple, it needs to be neutral. We recommend that the current process, which relies on just the long title of the bill, should be amended so that there will be included actually a short description of the proposed reform as well as reference to the title of the bill. We propose that this short description should be developed by a joint parliamentary committee, but that's assisted by a group of independently appointed experts, what we call an independent referendum panel. Second, we think there needs to be some significant amendments to the official government pamphlet and information that's provided to voters during the referendum campaign. We recommend that this information should be overseen by this expert body, the Independent Referendum Council, and we think it needs to focus on, first, a clear and neutral explanation of the amendments to the Australian people, followed by a brief summary of the arguments for and against the proposal. And then finally, a citizen's statement section that is developed through a formalised citizens' deliberative process, which would result in voters talking to voters about what's involved in the referendum change. We also think it should be brought into the 21st century, increasing availability through the print, broadcast and social media and translation into different languages. broadcast and social media, and translation into different languages, and availability for the visually impaired. And third and finally, we think there needs to be more transparency, although not restriction, of private funding of campaigns. So as to support this debate and discussion of referendum proposals between the people of Australia. In this respect, we believe that individuals and civil society organisations should be able to freely campaign and spend money during referendum campaigns. But it's really important that there is public transparency about donations these organisations receive through the introduction of a disclosure regime. We'll be happy to elaborate on any of these proposals for the committee in the course of discussions. They are my opening remarks. Thank you, Chair.
Thanks very much, Professor Appleby. Now to the Australians for Constitutional Monarchy, Professor Flint.
Thank you very much, Chair, and I thank the committee for your courtesy and assistance in receiving us. Our submission really develops from a submission made to the predecessor committee in 2009. And we have six proposals in our submission. Our first one is to retain completely the existing arrangements concerning the yes/no booklet. We think this has been proven to be successful. And we cannot imagine a more appropriate group to be approving the yes and no parts of the booklet than those MPs and senators who voted yes and who voted no. In fact, when it came to the question itself, our proposals for a slight change to the question were defeated. But I still think it is appropriate for the legislators to have the carriage of the yes and the no booklet. It should be of the same size. We accept that the default position should always be a mailing to the voter. A document in print is so much more persuasive, something that you can consider and pore over rather than something online. But there should be an arrangement whereby anybody who wishes can change to only receiving it by email or accessing it themselves. But the default position should always be a mailing to each voter, not to the household, as the change was made a few years ago. Our second proposal is for equal funding. If there is to be funding, it should be equal and not balanced one way. We were the beneficiaries of equal funding. We had much less money than the very well endowed Australian Republican Movement in 1999. Although I don't think we really needed the funding to conduct the campaign. The funding was important for television advertising. Such advertising no longer has the monopoly of video advertising because we have the internet and it's cheaper than it was comparatively in 1999. But if we're to have the funding of elections, we propose that there should be a statutory formula based on the amount spent to the political parties in the last election. We suggest an amount of one third of the amount paid in the last election, which would roughly equate to what was given in 1999, having regard to changes in the value of the currency. So we believe that if there is to be funding, it should be equal, and there should be a statutory formula to do that. Our third point was that the provision in Section 128 telling the Electoral Commission to count electors voting has resulted in, we believe, a manifest error. And we put in there an opinion from a former Court of Appeal judge on this. And his opinion, based on a British precedent, is that electors voting should include those voters who choose to vote or perhaps erroneously vote informal. It's hard to imagine how you could erroneously vote informal in a referendum. But we believe that the constitution requires that those be taken into account. And our reasons are set out in our submission, including the opinion of Mr Justice Handley. The next point was that we think the legislation, the referendum legislation, should not allow the executive government to undertake a plebiscite in an area relating to constitutional change. You might recall there has been a proposal hanging around for two decades that the next referendum on a republic be preceded by two plebiscites. We do not think this is the correct way to proceed and not the way which was the original intention of the founders. The Parliament should proceed directly to a referendum and not go through preceding plebiscites. Though I understand that the Australian Republican Movement has decided to abandon their strategy over the last two decades. Our fifth point relates to constitutional reform. And we think that constitutional reform should be covered by a second Corowa plan. The original Corowa plan, adopted at a People's Conference in 1893 at Corowa, sought to overcome the problem relating to the First Federation Convention. It was pretty clear after the First Federation Convention in 1891, which produced a good constitution, that it would never be adopted or only be adopted by one or two states because it went back to each of the colonial parliaments who bickered with one another and tried to re-debate the issue. What the Corowa plan involves is that when a convention comes to a conclusion and then consults with all of the parliaments, the idea is that the final draft from the convention goes straight to the people. And we think that is the correct way to go through a second Corowa plan. Indeed, we suggest that every few years, perhaps every decade, a new convention should be elected. The convention, we believe, should be elected in the same way that the convention was elected in 1999, as based on the same provisions in the constitution concerning a joint meeting of the two Houses of the Parliament. That is, each state would elect a number of delegates equivalent to the total number of members of the House and senators. So there would be a weighting in favour of the smaller states, which we think is fair. We think the convention should be unpaid and that with modern means of communication, it would not be very expensive to run. And our final suggestion, the sixth suggestion, was that we think that the monopoly under which the initiative for presenting a referendum to the people should not only be with the federal parliament or one house as the Section 128 provides, although it's never been exercised. We think it should be extended so that the people, the people themselves, as in Switzerland and some of the American states and one Canadian province and other countries, the people should be allowed by initiative, by a petition, to themselves launch a referendum. And we also believe that the states too should be able to launch referendums. And we suggest, just as a rule of thumb, that any four houses, any four state houses of the state legislature is entitled themselves to launch referendums. So that referendums should not be just with the central government, they should be widespread. One of the criticisms made of constitutional change in Australia is not many referendums get up. And that's true. But when you look at most of the referendums, most of the referendums have been to increase federal powers. And it might well be, and it obviously is, that the people don't wish to increase the powers of the federal parliament. Although having regard to those constitutions, those referendums which have failed, it's interesting to note that most of them wouldn't be needed today mainly because the High Court has effectively granted those powers to the Commonwealth. So, Chair, that's our submission.
Thanks very much, Professor Flint. Now to Women for an Australian Republic, Ms Sarah Brash.
Thank you, Chair. Women for an Australian Republic campaigned for the 99 referendum on the republic. We have very long memories. We were not part of the official yes committee and we had no funds for our campaigning other than our own resources. We have only ever campaigned online. Ever since 1999, we have been more than an interested observers of constitutional change processes in our country, principally because of the majority in four states provisioned in Section 128 of the constitution and how women are likely to vote. We have despaired of the reluctance of successive federal governments and politicians in the last 20 years to promote and implement regular constitutional change. In fact, just the opposite occurs. And we point to the problems with Section 44 as a case in point. We think that the majority of Australians, many of whom are now dual citizens, would be very surprised to find that they're not eligible to be members of the federal parliament, when in fact they can be members of state parliaments. However, despite the doom and gloom, we have been inspired and encouraged in recent years, particularly by two evolving participative processes. Firstly, the repeated and wide ranging consultation processes for indigenous recognition that have taken place since 2012 and since the presentation of the Uluru Statement from the Heart to the people in 2017. This is an impressive feat of coalition building, now influencing federal cabinet ministerial and parliamentary actions in both timing and content. And in the last consultative process, there were more than 3,000 public submissions made. And this concluded only on the 30th of April this year from a very wide range of input sources, including ours. Secondly, the resounding success of the same sex marriage plebiscite in 2017, a vote that was community initiated and sprang from nowhere to plebiscite in roughly 10 years. This plebiscite was remarkable for its unexpected result in favour of the proposition, the extent to which the 50% hurdle was cleared, and also its participation rate of around 80% for a non-compulsory, non-binding vote. We have framed our submission from the point of view of voters at large, either those not much engaged or completely disengaged. We have provided a number of suggestions to encourage people to take an active interest in how they are governed, to participate as active citizens, and to stop complaining about having to vote. It is high time for that opinion to be very unfashionable. We also note from other submissions that there are some excellent overseas practices that can be implemented here to improve our own processes, all now looking a bit tired and out of date. And of course, they are, seeing as they are pre-radio. While it is a good idea to update the legislation, and we agree with most of what has been proposed in other submissions, most but not all, we are pleased to discuss our ideas with the committee today. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms Brash. Can I go firstly to the issue of civics and civics education? A number of you have raised in your submissions about the importance of lifting the importance of civics in schools. And whilst that is absolutely important, I'm keen to hear from anybody how we do that with adults who are no longer in schools. And can I give you one example on how that might be done and get some feedback from you? One of the submissions we've heard from today talked about the importance of, and it was from Professor George Williams, and the importance of holding 10-year constitutional conventions. Can I get some feedback from you all about what your thoughts are on that? And I might get you to perhaps raise your hand electronically or analog wise if you'd like to take up the challenge on that one. Okay, Ms Brash.
We're highly in favour of that proposal. We think it should be more frequent than every 10 years. And we'd like to see that backed up by a regular process through our parliament. So having a parliamentary committee that's looking at suggestions from a range of sources constantly and also a minister for the constitution. But the constitutional conventions are very important, they attract a lot of publicity. There was fantastic interest in the constitutional convention held in 1998 before the republic referendum, and that really kicked off things to the extent where most people had a pretty well-formed view by the time they got into the ballot box on the 6th of November.
Ms Brash, do you think that by having these constitutional conventions more regularly than 10 years, that people will just, you know, the gloss will wear off and it'll just be, you know, another thing that gets entered into the 24/7 media cycle? There won't be that interest that you would if you had it less often?
No, I don't think so. I think people are used to a very constantly involving diet of topics, public topics, to engage their attention. I mean, if you just look at this year, 2021, the number of things that most people have had to deal with is a pretty sizable number. There's just one announcement after another that engages public attention and commentary. I would have thought that every three to five years would be a good idea for regular constitutional conventions.
All right, thank you. Professor Appleby.
Thank you very much, Chair. Look, I would just like to put on record my support for more regular citizens deliberative processes, whether that be through the form of a constitutional convention or otherwise. Obviously, in Australia, we have experience of the constitutional conventions, but there is other citizens deliberative processes that are being trialled elsewhere, both in Australia, in our state and territory jurisdictions, but also overseas. For example, the use of citizens' juries and citizens' assemblies. I think, could I just make two additional points, though? I think the first is that engagement in such a forum would need to really use all the diversity of media that we have available to us. I think if we're trying to reach adults who may not have had a particularly robust civics education during their school experience and may not be already engaging regularly, for example, with traditional media, we need to be making sure we're reaching them through the media that they are consuming. And so a forum that's held through more conventional means that isn't using all the different forms of social media that's getting out to these groups that we need to be targeting is really missing that opportunity, I think. And so that feeds into our submissions about the importance of using those forms of engagement. And the second point I would like to make, Chair, is just sort of to almost anticipate, if you wanted to ask the question of me in relation to would this, sort of, would people disengage if we did it too regularly? I don't think that's the danger. I think what it may do is start to regularise language around constitutional reform, regularise the idea of constitutional reform, regularise the idea that we may be able to achieve constitutional reform and that people will start to be engaging with the substance rather than just thinking, as we've seen with a number of referendum proposals, sort of the don't know, just vote no, much more, oh, constitutional referendum, we know what that term is, we know what's involved, we want to know what the general issues are. Regularising these things is a real positive, even if people have an inundation of information. Thank you.
Yes, well, there's no shortage of information in modern day world. Professor Williams suggested every 10 years, so every half generation. Ms Brash is suggesting between three and five years. What are you thinking is a reasonable period for this form of a formal consultation?
Well, Chair, as I said, I don't think we should limit ourselves to the idea of a national constitutional convention that looks at all the different issues that may be affecting the constitution, which then gives rise to the possibility of more regular, more specific deliberative forums. So it may be that every five years is appropriate for a national generalised inquiry through a convention, but more specific deliberative processes such as citizens' assemblies or citizens' juries in relation to more contemporary issues that have arisen in relation, for example, to the dual citizenship issue that has arisen in the last few years, but of course many other issues. I think it opens up that possibility of flexibility in terms of timing.
So Professor Appleby, how does that citizen assembly or citizen jury concept work? Can you just talk us through that a little bit more detail?
Yeah, sure. I mean, I'm not an expert in citizens deliberative processes. I would definitely... I would definitely recommend that the committee and the Chair be informed by the work of people like Associate Professor Ron Levy at the ANU College of Law, who is an expert in these issues. But as I understand from listening to Associate Professor Levy and others, a citizens' juries or a citizens' assembly can be smaller and can be selected for specific issues. The format for any jury and assembly, of course, needs to be formalised and there needs to be transparency and publicity, so that the Australian, the rest of the Australian people not only see it but have a a sense of trust in the process, trust in how people are selected, that they are a representative group, that they're being given objective information in order to come to their conclusions. But as I said, usually a citizens' assembly or citizens' jury is in relation to a specific issue rather than a broad ranging convention looking at potential issues that may be in need of constitutional reform.
All right.
Can I ask a question before we move on?
Yeah, absolutely. Thanks, Peter.
Yeah, just, so, thank you for those answers. And I'm really, I'm interested in this before we go back to some of the more mechanics of the current referendum act, which thank you for addressing. But you might have, if you had time to listen this morning, you might have heard we're also discussing civics education more broadly, like Dr Freelander raised getting adults involved, which I think is very important. But if we're talking about these constitutional conventions as part of an broader educative process, not just to actually change the constitution but to get citizens engaged, have you guys thought about what that might look like for school students? And particularly for how we can get students who perhaps are from called backgrounds or socially economically deprived or in, you know, poor public schools, for example, who probably don't have quite the same opportunities to be engaged in questions like constitutional reform as some others, engaged? And I, you know, it's something I think that many of us are thinking about now more than ever, when there is so much conversation online at least about people's so-called constitutional or human rights. It is so ill-informed. Are we talking too much when we're talking about these sorts of issues to people who already know the basics? And we're not talking to people who aren't going to go to year eleven and twelve, let alone university, and who aren't going to volunteer to be engaged in processes, you know? Where do we start so that then builds into a ten-year convention, for example? Very long-winded question, so over to you.
Thank you very much, Ms Murphy. And I'm not sure that I'm the expert to respond, other than to say that I share your concerns. And this sort of motivates my initial response around, we need to make sure we're at least using the platforms that are reaching these people. And in terms of how we would reach them, I mean, I think as a constitutional lawyer, I need to be careful of my own limitations. But I think, can I just pick up on one point you made very early on? You said that you're more interested in sort of broader educating process, not necessarily the referendum stuff.
I get them, but yeah, it's a different take, yeah.
Yes, I think they're intricately linked. And I think that one of the challenges we have whenever we come to a referendum in Australia is that we're doing so much of that initial background and foundational work that really should be being done prior to referendums in schools, but also the government has an ongoing responsibility to use the different forums, media that it has to try to reach those people. Yeah, thanks.
Others, I think, there's a hand up. virtual.
Um, I should, oh, no, sorry. Yes, go ahead.
I'm sorry, no, you haven't had an opportunity to speak yet, so go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Look, I share the same concern you have, definitely, Ms Murphy, regarding what's going on at the moment, especially with younger people having to know what's going on regarding constitutional change, regarding the constitution itself. I graduated from the Government School in Sydney at Ashford Boys in two thousand and nineteen. I myself, and, look, my major interest is in law and politics. I'm currently studying law. So someone like me, I did a lot of extra research myself regarding what's going on, but look, I could, I have firsthand knowledge of what it's like going through school with not knowing, a lot of kids not knowing anything about the constitution regarding our political system. I could recall asking people, you know, what were the two Houses of Parliament? And the majority of high school students didn't even know what the House of Representatives was or the Senate. In primary school, we, I recall probably in the latter part of that, studying briefly about the political system and our government, but that wasn't mentioned in high school whatsoever until I picked up legal studies as a subject. So I think one of the main avenues that that could go through is the New South Wales Department, or not even New South Wales, State Departments of Education implementing constitutional and government studies in the curriculum for high school students, such as year seven, eight and nine. Thank you, Chair.
All right, thank you. Would anyone else like to contribute to that? Those discussions on that topic? Yes, Mr, Professor Flynn.
Certainly. If there's a people in the world who are closely involved in constitutional matters, it's the Swiss. Every three months, they're called, or they don't have to because voluntary, voting is voluntary in Switzerland. Every three months, they have to consider a series of referendums, referendum proposals, both at the federal and state level, but also often at the local level. So they're quite attuned to this. And that is because the Swiss constitution provides for a significant degree of direct democracy. They don't have conventions, but they do have regular referendums. I think we need a convention for a general review. I wouldn't have it too often. But I do think that having that habit of allowing people to, by petition, to initiate referendums is very important. And it makes the system very much accountable to the people. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Professor Flynn. I'm keen to hear from you what your thoughts are on how often conventions should be held.
Well, I think a convention should be held for a general matter. Admittedly, the nineteen ninety-nine, nineteen ninety-eight one was over the republic, which became an extraordinarily big issue and rightly so, because it did involve significant changes, fundamental changes to the constitution. I wouldn't hold them too often, because I think people would lose interest. And I don't think that you really need to have a general review of your constitution too regularly. We haven't had one for over a century, and I think we're overdue for a general review of the constitution. The constitution has drifted very much, I think, because of the interpretations given to the constitution by the High Court. And they've taken the constitution well away from the original intention of the founders. And I think that that needs to be reconsidered by the people, but I would think that a convention should be a special event. And I do think that the best way to involve the people is by allowing them to participate directly, as they do in Switzerland, by allowing a significant number of people to initiate a referendum by a petition. And this makes the whole system much more accountable to the people. Governments know, oppositions know, all parties know that whatever they do, they are subject not to elections every three or four years only, but they're also subject to the people saying, no, that's not what we want, or this is something you're not considering. This is what we want. And those things go through. And I think you get a much more participatory democracy, a direct democracy, but you don't need lots of commissions and all sorts of bodies filled with experts. Here you have the people themselves deciding to start things. And I think that's a very, very efficient form of democracy.
Can I, can I ask you, Professor Flint, how you reconcile the Swiss model of having a some form of, you know, a plebiscite every three months? With what you're saying is, well, there's no need to have a convention for, you know, a much longer period. And I don't want to try and narrow you down to a period that you're prepared to say on that. But how do you reconcile long periods of time between constitutional conventions and the very, very short timeframe that the Swiss allow for those three month period?
Well, I think there are two different ways of doing it. The convention, which was obviously necessary for us before federation, because we were six self-governing colonies. The British tried in, very early in the peace, to try and get us to have some form of federation. And the local politicians who'd just got self-government were outraged and attacked the colonial secretary for that. So the British realised, well, if we were going to federate, it was a matter for us and not for them. And eventually, the realisation came, particularly in matters of defence, but also economics, that having one nation was a good idea. Now, I think the convention is a very special tool. Having, having regular, regular referendums is a different thing. One of the, one of the problems that the founders had was trying to reconcile the idea of referendums being used to change the constitution, because they thought that conflicted with the system of responsible government, where you left everything to the parliament as they do in Britain. But there was a strong attraction by the founders to the United States. They were very much impressed by the United States constitution. One thing they did rule out was the single person executive. That was raised. The idea of having a president or a governor who was the executive. They, they came to the conclusion that the the British system, which emerged after American independence, of a collective executive through the cabinet was a better and safer way to go. But I, I think using all sorts of different tools is very good, but a convention is such a major undertaking, I think it should be for a general review, not for specific matters. And I wouldn't hold it more often than, say, every twenty years.
All right, thank you.
Sorry, Chair, Mr Byer has been patiently waiting.
Yes, I, I was.
I wondered whether you could see that.
No, 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 I could see him and I was just going to go to him. Thanks, Ms Murphy. Mr Byer.
Yeah, thank you very much. Look, we, the Australian Republic Movement, certainly support the idea of regular constitutional conventions and the use of deliberative democracy. And on a frequent basis, I think Ms Brash's suggestion of three to five years is a sensible one. And I think depending on what topics are addressed at those conventions, that will determine whether the topic gets old for people or not. And if there's a good range of topics being discussed that engage the public, then it will still command their attention. But I did just want to also build on the comments of Professor Appleby, that in relation to the people that we perhaps need to reach most with the information, with further information about the constitution, about how Australian democracy works, are the people who are actually consuming news the least. So those people tend to have much lower levels of awareness about how Australian democracy works. And so a lot of the coverage around constitutional conventions won't actually be reaching them to a great extent. So we should be looking at opportunities to use other government communications, regular communications that people would receive otherwise, to raise the overall level of awareness about Australian democracy and to use all of those government touchpoints to help lift that. So it's not simply about having a connection with a government service for just that outcome only, but in the process of doing that, that they walk away from that, that experience enriched with further information about how their government works for them.
Thanks, Mr Byer. Dr Freelander has also been very patient. Dr Freelander.
Totally unused from me. Thank you very, very much, all of you, for your time. Can I, can I ask just a couple of questions? And first of all, I, I don't get the feeling from what I'm hearing that there is an urgent constitutional change. This is a document that was designed over a hundred and twenty years ago. In the last couple of parlaments, there's been incredibly wasteful debates and arguments about things like nationality. You may or may not be aware that most of my medical colleagues are excluded from running for parliament because of the officer profit concerns in the days of Medicare. I see an urgent need for change. You know, indigenous constitutional recognition is another case in point. So I actually think there is an urgent need for change from my point of view. I won't even get into the republic debate. But I also think that what I hear a lot is just arguments amongst elites and very little attempt, even in the indigenous population, to address the people that I see in my electorate. And I think that we need to rethink how we communicate. And we need to rethink how we address these issues through things like media, you know, advertising to disadvantaged groups to approaching schools. So I'm interested very much as to anyone who feels like I do that there is an urgent need for change.
All right, would someone, yes, that's Ms Davis.
Hi, thank you. Sorry, I have no idea how to work the system. So I just dropped my hand. I'm sorry for coming in late. I really apologize.
Not at all, not at all.
Um, just a few comments off the back of a number of comments. I mean, I think the comment about the people we need to reach the most, I think Sandy made the point, is a good one. And I take Andrew's point. These are elite-driven conversations and we do have to get, reach out to the people that actually don't consume the news that we consume. They're not really consuming a lot of that news at all. I think our experience, so we ran a deliberative dialogue process and a national constitutional convention for First Nations peoples that came off the back, as you know, of about seven years of commitment to constitutional recognition. And we ran it in a way that we excluded all, all what you would call, in a sociological sense, elites from the room, right? We didn't allow Patrick Dodson, politicians were allowed in. No National Congress, no rep bodies, no CEO who works for Aboriginal Medical Services or Health Services who are on huge salaries, couldn't attend the dialogues. It had to be voiceless people. It was deliberately crafted in a way that it wasn't elites and it was the people who never get to have a say. And I think, I don't know whether it was Andrew Sandy made the point, but I wanted to make the point that you can do this effectively in Australia. And I think the Uluru dialogues are an example of a very good democratic innovation in Australia, where we ran this convention that came up with consensus at the end, designed by me and Noel and Arnie Pass, Noel Pearson and Arnie Pat Anderson and others. But I, I wanted to make the point that it's kind of, it's not rocket science in that we, if you know your community, you can talk to your community. And, and because we, and I know Prime Minister Cabinet wasn't happy, but we did exclude the bureaucrats from the meeting, so people would feel safe, that they could say things and not worry about the implications of that for their funding, et cetera. And we provided a safe space. And then we drew upon all of the experience that does exist in Australia. So we learnt really heavily on the Centenary of Federation report that was put together by that Centenary of Federation Commission, because they ran civics education dialogues in primary schools and community halls and, you know, right across the country during that Centenary of Federation. And there's a huge amount of learnings. And I know it was back in two thousand and one, I appreciate it might have dated, but we used a lot of their learnings around transparency, impartiality, all of those principles in the Uluru dialogues. So they were tested again in twenty seventeen and they stood up. And it was very much about making sure that we got the sign-off from Shorten and Turnbull on all the options we took out. We got all the legals checked. Everything was apolitical. Nobody could get up and sell anything. And it was designed deliberately to avoid groupthink, so you couldn't have anyone coming in and, you know, yelling treaty, rah rah rah, and, you know, and intimidating people not into not participating. And so with the civics education that we taught and the legal education and the political assessments that were done over three days, we came out with a really, you know, amazing actual proposal that, you know, my colleague on the referendum council, I think it was former Chief Judge Murray Gleeson, was like, no, no constitutional lawyer had come up with this solution prior to the dialogues. And, and that is the magic of what can happen when you get Australians together and provide them with civics education in a really deliberative way. and provide them with civics education in a really deliberative way and ask them to fashion, you know, what, what a particular reform may or may not look like. And I just, I just wanted to make that point because I think, you know, we have people right across the community, including our democratically elected representatives, who do know the people in their, in their footprint. You know, we, 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 we know who they are. And one of the things we did really well, I think, with Gabriel Appleby, Professor Appleby was with me on this kind of process, is we didn't allow facilitators. So all of the people who led the conversations were local people who knew everybody by name, who knew where they worked and lived, who knew who their family were. And so it was done in a fashion that people felt safe. But people could roll up their sleeves and engage in something that initially they said they didn't want to, which is, they didn't believe that, you know, this process was a, you know, being done in good faith. They didn't feel like Australians wanted recognition of Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people. But once we walked them through that process, they rolled up their sleeves and said, right, let's, let's imagine what the future of Australia could look like and, and we'll go through this process. And so I just, I just wanted to make that point because I do think sometimes these conversations are very elite driven, I do. And what we did with the Uluru dialogues, me and Arnie Pat Anderson and Noel Pearson and Patrick Dodson initially, because he was the first chair, which is to go back to basics and how do you engage your mob in your own region? We used some of the really fundamental principles of that. And then we laid the Centennial, the Centenary of Federation principles around impartiality, civics education, transparency over the top. And, and we were able to come up with a consensus. So that when we got to Uluru, we, we, we didn't, no one could undo what was done in the dialogues. So, you know, there were big leaders who turned up to say, no, no, you know, we don't want, we don't want to participate in the parliament. We don't want this, we don't want that. But we said, the work has been done in the dialogues and all we're doing today is endorsing, you know, what they've agreed to. And that was really important just for that confidence, that elites don't come in and overturn processes at the last minute. And so I just wanted to make that point, just simply because the Constitutional Convention at Uluru in 2017 is probably the most recent Australian process on constitutional reform. And, and there's a lot in Australia to be drawn upon in terms of what works and doesn't work out there in communities, particularly in communities that probably don't have very high literacy and didn't graduate from, you know, high school or have university education.
All right, we're going to have to leave there. Thanks, Professor Davidson. Would you please pass on your, on the committee's thanks to Professor Appleby for, she's had to, to leave to go and teach her constitutional law students. But just very quickly, because we are almost out of time, in fact, we are out of time, but Peter Murphy. You're on mute, Ms. Murphy.
How is it possible to still not know you're on mute in 2021? So I, I have one, hopefully it's quite a pointed question. And let's take the voice, let's just assume, having gone through all these processes, that in the next 12 months, there's going to be a process of a referendum to enshrine the voice in the constitution. What it, don't worry about what it looks like, but that's going to happen. What urgently needs to be changed in everyone's view? If you can answer it quickly, or you can take it on notice. What urgently needs to be changed in the referendum act? So that we can, could in the next 12 months have a proper referendum process to enshrine the voice? Or whatever policy you want enshrined and change you want made to the constitution.
Excellent, excellent question, Peter Murphy. And let's just do a very quick whip around the grounds. If you want to give us your top suggestion from each organisation, starting with the Australian Republic Movement.
Well, in terms of the voice, it may be a little bit different. But look, our, the number one reform we'd like to see is in relation to foreign interference and influence. We believe there needs to be more transparency around donations and a prohibition on, on foreign interference.
Excellent, thank you. UNSW, Professor Davis?
Um, this is a constitutional wise answer, but can I, can I just send you my top?
If you're going to send it on notice, feel free to give us more than one.
Okay, I will, I will, thank you very much.
Excellent, thank you. Professor Flint, actually, you know what, Professor Flint, I'm going to, I'm going to bypass you and go to your junior, your youth ambassadors. Mr. Lahood and Mr. Jacobs, can you give us your views, please? You're on mute, Mr. Jacobs, you're on mute. We can't hear you, Mr. Jacobs.
I can, I can probably button now, can you?
We can, we can hear you, Mr. Lahood, yes.
I agree with the same thing. If I was, this has been my personal capacity, I'd love to see as well transparency in terms of foreign funding in the referendum as well.
Can I, while I've got you, if you don't mind, can I ask you a little bit about the, the need to, this may seem almost a silly question to ask, but because the constitution was drafted 100, more than 120 years ago, before even radio, should we be amending the Mechanism Act to allow for distribution of information in relation by, by, for example, social media and electronic means? There's a Dorothy Dixler for you.
Shaun, did you want to answer that? I think I've spoken too much already.
I'd love to hear from Shaun, but Shaun, are you, your microphone's not working, I don't think, Shaun.
Thank you, Chair, I've just unmuted myself, can you hear me?
Shaun, Shaun Burke, yes.
Oh, sorry, Youth Ambassador.
Yeah, I was going to Shaun Jacobs, but.
I'll remute.
Shaun Jacobs, I think you've dropped off altogether now. Shaun Burke, do you have a view? I don't know if you fit into the Youth Ambassador category, but.
Why not, why not? Look, my belief is that you include all mediums. I, I think, I think having a, a document that you can hold in hand is important. I think accessing people through their, their preferred means of communication is important. It's not that expensive anymore. So I think that, sure, I mean, we need to provide people with information that is correct. And I would imagine some sort of printed document would be, would be the way of getting all those people who don't have access to what many of the youth use. But on the other hand, why not use YouTube and, and our platforms where people congregate? So I'm, I'm for being as wide as possible with the way we communicate, as long as it's, I guess, monitored for accuracy from official sources and not biased.
All right, thank you, Mr. Burke. Shaun Jacobs, have we got you back? No, all right, Ms. Brash.
Our suggestion would be that the Act is amended to deal with all forms of online advertising, right down to the level of TikTok, you know, 15 seconds to three minutes. There needs to be attention to how material is to be authorised. That was a problem that we had during 1999 as a, as a voluntary group with no registered office. And the final thing I'd say is that it should be done as soon as possible and well in advance of the coming referendum on Indigenous recognition. And just to finish, I'd like to say how much we agree with Dr. Freeland that the constitution is in urgent need of a major overhaul.
Thanks, Ms. Brash. All right, I want to thank you all very much for appearing before the committee today and obviously for all of your submissions. I'm sorry that Professor Flint, if you could pass on my apologies that we couldn't hear from your other Youth Ambassador, Shaun Jacobs. But thank you to all. Thank you for your attendance and you'll be sent a copy of the transcript of your evidence and will have an opportunity to request corrections to transcription errors. If you have been asked to provide any additional information, Professor Davis, and I know you have, could you please forward it to the secretariat within two weeks of receiving the Hansard transcript? If you feel like you didn't address that issue in your submissions about, you know, give us your, your, your top several ideas on what reforms you'd like to see in the Machinery Act, feel free to, to put in a supplementary written submission. Thank you all for your time, we very much appreciate it and we, you're, you're now free to go.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Julian Simmons, are you still on the line? Senior, I fear we may have a quorum problem.
Although it would be an excellent hearing with just me and you, Andrew.
Be far less arguments, Peter Murphy. Look, I don't think it's a huge issue. The submissions are evidence anyway. Can I just confirm it's only you and me, Peter? None of, none of our other colleagues are on the line?
Sharon definitely had to go.
Mike's gone.
Mike's gone. I had told them I was fine with, to carry the outside without them. So they may not be able to come back, I'm not sure.
The last I heard from Julian is that he's still online. So we're going to assume that Julian Simmons is still online, but is having some technical problems. But in the meantime, the representatives of the Attorney General's Department, it is your lucky day because you've got two heavy hitters with you this afternoon. One, one from the, the ALP and one from the coalition government. So I'll, I'll go through the, the usual information with you. Welcome, I don't know your names, I'm sorry, and I'm going to ask you to, to introduce yourselves, please. You're on mute, gentlemen.
It's not the day for technology.
No, but you note, you'll note that you can now see me. It only took a couple of hours.
The other committee I'm on is having a hearing today as well. And I can see from their WhatsApp group that they're also having tech IT problems. It might be the APH system.
I had to shut my computer off. Oh, there we go, we've got you.
Oh, great, you can still hear me?
Can, we can certainly hear you.
Thank you, Chair, I'm sorry about that.
That's all right.
So I'll just introduce us to start with, if that's okay?
Sure.
I'm David Lewis, I'm the General Counsel Constitutional in the Office of Constitutional Law here in the Attorney General's Department. And I'll let my colleague introduce himself.
Good afternoon, Chair, my name's Christopher Malone, I'm a senior legal officer in the Office of Constitutional Law.
Christopher, I didn't get your surname.
Malone.
Malone, thanks, Christopher. And where are you, what office are you in?
The Office of Constitutional Law.
So same, okay. All right, thank you. Although the committee does not require you to give evidence under oath, I should advise you that this hearing is a legal proceeding of the parliament and therefore has the same standing as a proceeding of the House. The giving of false or misleading evidence is a serious matter and may be regarded as a contempt of parliament. For the hands, for the hands up record, we have David Lewis from the Office of Constitutional Law of the Attorney General's Department, along with Christopher Malone. And I'm accompanied by Ms. Peter Murphy, who's already said hello. I'm a member for Dunkley, so it's just the two of us at this point in time. Now, to minimise disruptions to the hearing, I remind you to please use a headset if you can. Mutual microphones when you're not speaking, if you're, if you are disconnected, please reconnect using the details you've been provided with. I'm now going to invite you to make a short opening statement before we proceed to a general discussion. Over to you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Chair, I do have a short statement. The Attorney General's Department thanks the committee for the opportunity to contribute to this inquiry. The department is responsible for Australia's law and justice framework, including constitutional law. This includes supporting the Attorney General and other Commonwealth departments by providing constitutional policy advice, providing legal advice on constitutional matters, primarily through the Australian Government Solicitor, and representing the Commonwealth in legal cases where constitutional issues arise, again, primarily through the Australian Government Solicitor. The department has historically been closely involved in developing referendum proposals. In the last few decades, this has involved proposals concerning the republic and a preamble to the constitution, the recognition of local government, and more recently, work with the National Indigenous Australians Agency on constitutional recognition of Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people. As you will have seen, our written submission to the inquiry includes contributions from the Department of Education, Skills and Employment, which has responsibility for several programmes that support students' engagement with the constitution, and also contributions from the National Indigenous Australians Agency, which has primary responsibility for the co-design with Indigenous people of an Indigenous voice to parliament and the government and the constitutional recognition of Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people. Again, as the committee will have seen, our written submission also includes some information about historical processes that have been used to review the constitution, including the Royal Commission on the Constitution from 1927 to 1929, the Joint Standing Committee on Constitutional Review from 1956 to 1959, the Australian Constitutional Convention from 1973 to 1985, and the Constitutional Commission, which reported in 1988. As the committee will be aware, the Inquiry Terms of Reference include the effectiveness of the arrangements for the conduct of referendums under the Referendum Machinery Provisions Act. The Department of Finance administers that act and is responsible for electoral policy more general, generally. The Attorney General's Department works with the Department of Finance, where there's an intersection between constitutional and electoral issues. While our department provides assistance and advice to the government in relation to referendum proposals, the committee will appreciate that the decision whether to seek to amend the constitution or more generally, whether to establish a mechanism to consider amendments of the constitution matters for the government.
Mr. Lewis, I don't mean to cut you short, but you should take it as read that we have read your submissions. So is there, is there anything additional that you want to say that's not in your submissions?
Sorry, Chair, if I was laboring the point, I had in fact just reached the end of what I wanted to say. And so I didn't want to raise anything extra.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that. Look, I'm, this will be a fairly free flowing discussion between the four of us. I'm really keen to hear from you about whether, what work we've done as a, as an Australian government to compare the levels of knowledge that Australians have about the constitution and the way that we change our constitution compared with other countries. Have, has any work been done on that?
Certainly from my knowledge, not recently by the Attorney General's Department. I'm not sure that, what the answer would be in relation to other departments, but we certainly aren't undertaking current work on surveying either what other countries, mechanisms other countries use or the attitudes of the Australian people at the moment. We do, of course, try to keep abreast with, you know, reports of other bodies who are surveying the Australian public and those sorts of things. But we, our sort of role in relation to referendums has traditionally been and continues to be really one of supporting the government if the government decides to pursue a particular proposal.
One of the, I think, I think it's fair to say that one of the universal truths that are, that's come out of this inquiry, and we all knew it long before this anyway, is that there's a, there's a great deal of disengagement between many aspects of the Australian community and, and politics and government and how it's run and the constitution. One of the suggestions that's been made about how we could address that is by having more regular general constitutional conventions, whether that be every three to five years or every 10 years or every 20 years. I appreciate that I'm asking. I appreciate that I'm asking you to comment on, it's not policy, but does the Attorney General's Department have a view about whether that would be a good idea, a bad idea, and why?
Well, I think Chair, I think that would sort of expressing a view on that would perhaps travel a bit beyond what we feel responsibility to express a view on, ultimately, whether to have.
Sorry, I'm just going to ask you a second moment because I think someone's dialed in but they're not on mute and I'm finding it hard to hear you, so I'm sorry to be rude, but, sorry Chair, I'm not sure if someone has dialed in, but if they could put themselves on mute, that would be helpful.
All good, sorry Julian, you're quite right, probably heard my curious type of old view.
Thanks Julian, sorry Karen.
You're welcome, it's good to have some clear audio. Now, sorry, I've lost my train of thought, I was saying, I think sort of it's not really for us to express a view on whether there should be such an ongoing commission, I think that's really a matter for the government. Of course, I would say that, you know, our area of expertise is constitutional law and we're always interested in ideas for constitutional reform, and obviously, as our submission highlights, in the past, there've been a range of different mechanisms which have been used, parliamentary committees, royal commissions, or standing committees to reform the Constitution. And in fact, the last successful referendums, if you say that a yes vote is a successful referendum, were in 1977, and that was following some of the sessions of the Australian Constitutional Convention, which was sort of a standing body there. On the other hand, you could look at the Republic referendum and perhaps stepping a little bit into the personal here, I as a junior lawyer worked on the referendum task force in 1999, so I have some recollections of that process, but obviously, that process involved a very high profile convention with some appointed and some elected delegates and a lot of interest in the media and amongst the general public, and then a very high profile campaign. And we all know the result was that the referendum proposal didn't come close to being passed. Now, obviously, that was the will of the Australian people and so you might count that a success, but I guess just goes to show that I just think different processes won't necessarily lead to sort of a yes vote. Having said that, as I said at the start, we're supportive of discussion of constitutional issues generally.
Sorry Chair, sorry you go.
So could I get you to, I appreciate, I'm not asking you to answer this as though whether it's a good or bad idea, but you've no doubt looked at other models in other countries. Can you talk us a bit, talk us through how citizen assemblies and citizen juries work in other countries?
I'm sorry Chair, actually, I don't know anything much about how they work in other countries, and I have just as a general matter observed some reporting in Australia over the years about sort of democratic projects whereby citizens are gathered together, you know, for a few days and hear from some experts and ask some questions and form views. And I don't know, some of your earlier witnesses might have spoken to some of those issues, they were certainly covered in the submissions to some extent. Obviously, I'm also aware that in some other countries, there is a process of a citizen's initiated referenda, which is a slightly different thing where a certain minimum number of citizens could suggest a referendum proposal. That would be, you know, quite a new thing in Australia, that'd be quite different to the way we've done things in the past, but I'm sorry, I'm not actually able to assist you much on the details of how they operate overseas.
All right, thanks, Peter Murphy.
Thank you, so my question really is complementary to yours, which really is, would it be your section of the Attorney General's Department that would do the background research and the policy work on different ways of reviewing the Constitution? You know, particularly given, as you say in your submission, you know, we had the last sort of commission or review broadly that you point to was 1988, and then we had a specific convention for the Republican referendum, but we haven't had anything since. So is it your section that government gives the work to, to look into whether we should do more or something?
I think there might be a range of people who are involved, I think it's right that we would be involved. I think obviously, the whole question about whether to even look at changing the Constitution, it's such an important and significant matter that I think typically Prime Ministers are involved in those sorts of questions as well, so you would expect a Prime Minister or the Prime Minister's Department to be involved in that as well. And then also, as we've highlighted in our submission, on the more mechanical side of things, often the Department of Finance might be involved just because of their responsibility for electoral policy. But if the government were to decide, and for example, if this committee were to make certain recommendations about processes to review the Constitution, then I certainly think it would be our area within the Attorney General's Department which should be responsible for looking at responding to that.
So we've also heard, and I'm sure you're aware of this as anyone, particularly given, as you said, your section looks at that intersection between electoral and constitutional issues and the conduct of referenda, I think, would be the definition of the intersection between electoral and constitutional issues. You know, Professor Williams talked about giving evidence at least five times to five different hearings about mechanical changes to the Referendum Act, and we are hopefully hastening quickly down the path towards holding a referendum into enshrining the voice. So is there work being done about updating the Referendum Act at the moment?
I think you'd really have to direct those questions to the Department of Finance. We're not sort of actively working on that sort of reform ourselves, but I couldn't speak really for the Department of Finance.
Would you not be involved in that if that was occurring?
I think if there was an advance proposal to amend that act, I would hope that we would be involved, that's right. But it really is they administer that act, so you'd have to direct questions about whether that's being considered.
I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, but I take it by you saying if there was an advance proposal, you'd be consulted, that that's not the stage that we're at. And so I guess my supplementary question to that is, given the work with the NIAA and, you know, the work that is being done, has part of that been the suggestion that we should look at the mechanics of the Referendum Act as we are also looking at what it would look like to enshrine the voice?
Again, perhaps without me wanting to put words into other people's mouths, I think the National Indigenous Australians Agency has spoken to the Department of Finance about those sorts of issues, just at a very high level, but I wouldn't be able to say what the details of that is. But I would say, and I appreciate this is perhaps a slightly different direction from which a lot of witnesses before this committee have been going, but you'd be aware that in the past, typically, when a referendum proposal has sort of gotten close to being put to the Australian people, it tends to focus the minds of ministers and the government on exactly what the legal framework will be for the holding of that vote, and there have been modifications of those requirements under the Machinery Provisions Act in relation to specific referendums.
Yeah, and look, I take that point, and my question is partly out of concern, you know, about making sure that there's not administrative hitches which turn into political hitches as we go towards the voice, but it's also the broader point, as one of our witnesses, Andrew, I can't remember which one it was, but in our first roundtable, one of the professors said, arguably, some of the failures, like referendum about local government, were because Parliament left some of the mechanical changes until too late, and it was difficult for the general public to differentiate between political motivations for changing the Referendum Act, which might be associated with the yes or no case, and the important mechanical reasons to change it. So that's why I ask, given particularly, we've had witnesses talk about how often they've appeared before parliamentary committees saying these changes are really important to an act that apparently hasn't been substantially changed for over 100 years, whether that work is being done.
And I'm sorry, I don't think I can really add much to what I've already said, that I think you need to sort of direct those questions to the Department of Finance.
We may need to.
Yeah.
So what, so in terms of, you know, doing this sort of preparatory work, is there anything that your section of the department is responsible for? You know, you're working on the NIAA and proposals for the voice?
So we're regularly in contact with NIAA, who do have the primary policy responsibility for the co-design of the voice to Parliament and for constitutional recognition. So you might be aware, I think that the final co-design report has been provided to the Minister for Indigenous Australians and is considering that. So I'm not sure there's anything much further I can say about that process.
So just for my purposes then, so I understand, you know, we had terrible conniptions in this country about section 44, right? So the role of your section of the department, is that to provide advice to the government of the day about what section 44 actually says and what the, you know, jurisprudence around it is, and/or advice about if it was to be changed, how it might be changed? Or is it something else? So we know what to ask you questions about.
Oh, well, it might be, it might include that sort of thing. I mean, I guess just for the context, the Office of Constitutional Law here in the department is very small, there's about eight of us altogether, and as I tried to outline just very generally, we do a lot of different things in relation to constitutional law, a lot of it is in relation to current constitutional litigation or advice on a range of constitutional issues. Constitutional reform, I guess, is a subset of that, and as I said, we don't have any sort of ongoing work on, you know, thinking up new ideas to reform the Constitution. Rather, we would assist the government if the government had a proposal or wanted to consider a proposal for changing the Constitution.
Right, and similarly then, if the government of the day was interested in civics education along the lines of Professor Davies' submission this morning, I think it was Professor Davies, that's something that you might be consulted on by another department but wouldn't have any particular role in?
That might be right, it might depend on exactly what the proposal was, but if we're talking about civics education in the context of schools particularly, as we've outlined in our submission, it would typically be the Department of Education who is responsible for that, and they are responsible for several programmes relating to the Australian curriculum and schoolchildren visiting Canberra and the constitutional sort of information displays at the High Court. So depending on what a proposal was, we might be consulted about it, but we don't have any current responsibility in relation to sort of general civics education.
All right, I just have two more quick questions before I give you back to the Chair. One is, you know, the sort of research and information that the Chair was after about, well, how do other countries do citizen engagement? You know, would we, what would be involved if we were to have a 10-year role in Constitutional Convention? Where in the public service would that sort of work be done?
Well, I'm not sure that there's anywhere which is sort of dedicating resources to just sort of researching what's happening overseas in relation to constitutional reform, I'm just, I'm not sure that there is somewhere who has a role to do that.
Right, say government wanted to do it, would it be, who would they ask to do it?
Oh, it might be us, that's right. Obviously, depending on the scale of whatever the work is, is a question of resources to do that work, and so, but they might ask us or an area in Attorney General's Department to do that.
All right, and my last question really just arises from my observation of the gender, let alone the called diversity of witnesses. To this hearing today, you said there's eight people in your section, what's the gender balance in the section?
Sadly, it's not great, I agree with that. So I think at the moment, and it changes all the time, so I think if we count the eight of us, I think there's two women and six men at the moment.
Okay, thank you Chair, I'll hand back to you.
Thanks, Ms Murphy, just one last question I've got for you. In your submissions on page six, you talk about the civics education for Australian students going to year 10. I appreciate you're not the Education Department, but in my experience, and I do get to a lot of schools, and one of my favourite jobs is talking to students about civics and government and politics and law. They don't seem, they do civics as in, you know, they'll come to Parliament House, you know, either grade six or grade seven, they'll do a unit on civics in one of those years, and they never revisit it again, let alone in year 10. So I'm just wondering how your intelligence on students can learn about the Australian Constitution through foundation to year 10 Australian curriculum, just doesn't seem to be happening in year 10?
I'm sorry Chair, I'm not really going to be able to sit too much beyond what's in the written submission about that, as it is the Department of Education who is responsible for that programme. I guess I would say, as I think is recorded there, that states and territories have a certain degree of latitude about the way they give effect to what's in the national curriculum, so I don't know if there's some regional variation about who does what at what year level, but I don't have any further information on that really.
All right, thank you, that's all I have for you. Anything else, Ms Murphy?
No, thank you.
All right, well, thank you very much for your attendance this afternoon. You'll be sent a copy of the transcript of your evidence and you'll have an opportunity to request corrections to any transcription errors. If you have been asked to provide any additional information, could you please forward it to the secretariat within two weeks of receiving the hand side transcript? Thank you to all our witnesses, to our secretariat, to broadcasting, to all my fellow colleagues who've joined us, and of course, all the witnesses, and I'll declare this public hearing closed, thank you.
Chair, just before you leave.
Yes.